Good evening, everyone. The time is 6:02, 6:03, and this is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Leander City Council. Today is Thursday, April 4th, and at this time, we are going to ask Joe Bob Ellison to come forward and give our invocation. Following the invocation, if you'll stand for our, remain standing for our pledges of allegiance. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, council, mayor, council, city manager. Father, thank you so much for the opportunity we have to be here today. And God, I just pray that, Father, over this meeting, God, you would just do a mighty work, not only in our council members and our mayor, but in our city staff, that you continue to give them the refreshing that they need. It's not an easy job, any day, in public service, God, and I pray, God, that they know that I'm thankful for each one of them. I know our church community in Leander is thankful for them. And, God, I pray for just a spirit of encouragement for them as they go through the crazy election season. But I pray, Father, right now, God, that you continue to keep this city in the center of your will and what you want and what you want for us, whatever that looks like to our council. God, I want to just thank, Father, the opportunity that I have to be a part of the National Crime Victims Rights Week and National Animal Control Week as well. And, God, I'm thankful to work with a bunch of amazing men and women in the police department here in Leander. And, God, I pray you continue to do mighty things in our city. And everybody said?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag?
Under the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Joe Bob. We appreciate that. Trying not to keep you too late. At this time, we'll do a roll call.
Councilmember Andrea Navarrete.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Michelle Stevenson.
Here.
Councilmember Shannon Shepard.
Here.
Councilmember Christine Satterquist.
Here.
Councilmember Jeff Seiler.
Here.
Councilmember Marcy Cannon.
Here.
Mayor Troy Hill.
Here. We do have a quorum. We can do business. We're going to move to item three, citizen comments. I do have some people signed up to speak. Mitch, you got the short straw.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Mitch Fuller. I'm the senior vice commander of the Leander VFW post, and I wanted to point out, I showed the mayor this right before the meeting, but there's a picture of the mayor, myself, Mayor Pro Tem Stevenson, and our commander to Texas VFW magazine when we conducted the Iraq War ceremony at Veterans Park last fall. We definitely want to do more ceremonies in public, and I will tell you that it is our intent, if you guys will bless us, the best ceremony that we had this past year was September, the September 11th ceremony, which was in front of the police and fire department, and we would like to make that an annual tradition moving forward. That was by far the best ceremony that we had. And just some updates and thank yous as well. We, along with the Chamber of Commerce, hosted Circusaurus on our property over the St. Patrick's Day weekend a couple of weeks ago. That was a very interesting, and to say the least, I don't know if any of y'all went to it, but an interesting event, and a lot of people came, so hopefully some sales tax was generated by all the people who were there and left to go spend their money in Leander. This weekend, we're hosting the Austin German Shepherd Association Dog Show at our property, so if you want to come see some beautiful dogs, we're working with them to do that. We have 22 acres, and if there's ever anything the city needs, a place to hold an event, I mean, that's a spectacular area out there, come talk to us and work with us. So, thank you for being supportive, supportive of us, and if there's anything we can do, let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch. Ms. Karen Thompson?
Karen Thompson, 11327 Hero Way West, Leander, 78641, and chairman of the Leander Historical Preservation Commission. And in that endeavor, I wanted to do a little three-minute thing on house fires and how lucky we are to have such a great fire department. I've been just, really, the last 10 years since we came back up here, just amazed at this fire department. This is what happened all too often. This is the George Allen home that was north of Leander, and it burned to the ground in 1927. Because in 1927, there were no volunteer fire departments. Some cities that had an inner city at that time had a fire department, but there was nothing for the rural people. And this was a farm, was a farmhouse, a very nice farmhouse, but still a farmhouse, and there was no way to go out and fight that fire. It's also an unusual picture because photos of a 1927 house fire are pretty unusual. For those of us in the photo collecting world, they're a real gem, so this is one of them. This is the 19, by 1960s, the Leander had organized a volunteer fire department. I'm not for sure, my son can tell me what happened to this fire truck. I think this fire truck is still around, and I think it's in Florence or Gerald. I'm going to check on that. It's not here anymore. The, they don't have any old trucks around here anymore, fire trucks. Their oldest is 2000. So, this is a 1978 photo, and to my knowledge, the back row, second from left, is Jody Giddens. And many of you know Jody. I don't think Jody's here tonight. No, he comes a lot. Anyway, that's Jody, and he's still kicking, still with us. So, then this photo is in 1985. The one on the left was my father-in-law, Swede Thompson, getting Fireman of the Year and Newly-Elect Board President. So, we think why we know it was organized in 60, because that guy's getting a 25-year award, and the picture was made in 1985. So, these fellows worked very hard, and I'm telling you, many times Swede would jump up, half-finished with his meal, and out the door. So, I always have a place in my heart for the volunteer firemen, and they did a great job here. Thank you. I almost made it.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
You know, you really scared me when I looked real quick and saw a White House on fire. I was already preparing my alibi. All right, Robert Hanson.
Thank you for letting me talk. I've got the oak pollen blues, so I'm going to try to press forward anyway. So, I received a letter from Leander's Engineering Department 22 months ago. The letter stated, among other things, they might need to acquire my property for a right-of-way to complete the East Street project. The letter from Mrs. Crawford said if I had questions, to call Mr. Wadaki at M&amp;S Engineering. I called Wadaki after two years, and he told me the plan would include a ditch on my property that would remove me and my neighbors from the newly surveyed FEMA floodplain. I told the engineers I had consulted with a PhD engineer to see if there were ways to do this project and leave the Hero Way and the Evans Street stakeholders on the tax rolls instead of relegating it to a permanent floodplain. After that, Mr., I received a letter saying Mr. Watt had decided that my land would no longer be included in the project. I want to be very, very clear, my project was, my property was required to be included in the project to remove my neighbors from the floodplain. This unexpected change in the plan ensures my neighbors and me on the north side of East Evans Street and the south side of Hero Way would remain in the floodplain forever. This project ignores recommendations by experts that would leave millions of dollars worth of land in the south side of Hero's Way and the north side of East Evans Street on the tax rolls as viable taxable commercial property. An alternate, an alternate plan would reduce the required bridge by half and eliminate the city's need to condemn any land because the land for a plan like that would be donated. The current plan would require two spans of bridge, one across the natural Brushy Creek and another span across the ditch yet to be constructed. Alternate plans would save millions on the bridge, hundreds of thousands on the condemnation of land, and many thousands on excavation, and save the trees in park and leave millions of dollars in commercial real estate on the tax rolls. A better plan would be if the city abandoned the current design and let developers acquire the property rights from me and my neighbors for nothing, to set a plan in motion to save all the commercial land on Hero's Way between 183 and East Street, including commercial property on the north side of East Evans, some of the most valuable property in central Texas. If this $23 million project was revamped to allow the alternate rescue of the floodplain, the city would only be responsible for half the expense. The savings for the city would pay the city manager's salary for 30 years, not including sales taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Appreciate it. All right, we're going to move to proclamations. We have several tonight. The first, Mr. Seiler.
Thank you, mayor. I want to call up Carrie Stannell. She's our new executive director for the Williamson County Children's Advocacy Center, and I'm going to read this proclamation. It says, "Whereas in federal fiscal year 2017, the U.S. Census Department reported an estimated population of 143,362 children in Williamson County, Texas. And the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services reported 3,113 completed child abuse investigations in the county and 596 confirmed cases of child abuse neglect. And the Williamson County Children's Advocacy Center forensically interviewed 661 children in the same time period. And whereas our children are our most valuable resource and will shape the future of Texas, and child abuse can have long-lasting psychological, emotional, and physical effects that can have lifelong consequences, and whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the meaningful connections and partnerships created between child welfare, education, health, community, faith-based organizations, businesses, and law enforcement. And whereas children's advocacy centers are created in the Texas Family Code to work with government agencies in a unified effort to investigate cases of child abuse in a manner, in a manner that reduces trauma to young victims, and the Williamson County Children's Advocacy Center, a nonprofit organization which was formed in 1997 to serve all cities in Williamson County, exists to provide a child-friendly, safe place to disclose child abuse, reduce emotional trauma for children and their nonoffending family members, and extend professional services that protect the integrity of an investigation. And whereas the Williamson County Children's Advocacy Center, Leander Police Department, Child Protective Services, CASA, Emergency Medical Services, and the County Attorney's Office, and the District Attorney's Office, and the judges, and all of their staff, foster parents, teachers, and others work together and play a critical role in the prevention and healing of abused and neglected children in our community to ensure that they have the opportunity to grow up in a safe, loving, permanent homes. Now therefore, I, Troy Hill, mayor of the city of Leander, do proclaim April 2019 as National Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month in Leander, and encourage all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families by that recognition, and hereby recognize the Williamson County Children's Advocacy Center for its outstanding service to protect the unprotected, seek justice against child maltreatment, and encourage all citizens to be vigilant in recognizing and reporting child abuse." That was long.
So, Carrie joined us in October, and so I just thought maybe for a minute, just introduce yourself and your background and...
I will. I'll be very quick. I understand you guys have been very supportive of the advocacy center, so thank you very much. I did, I joined the advocacy center in October, so I'm just coming up on six months, although that was my background previously. I was in North Texas. I very much appreciate being here, the work we do. I wouldn't want to live in a, in a county or a city that did not have a children's advocacy center because it is the right model to do the work that we do. And I know since the inception of the advocacy center, we have served over 10,000 children, so it's phenomenal, and I really appreciate that you guys support that and have continued to do so, and I look forward to working with you all. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. [applause]
Counsel, I've had the honor for serving on the advocacy center board since August of 2015. It's just phenomenal organization. I'm glad that Carrie's there to help out and look forward to seeing what, what happens over the next few years as we continue to grow.
Great job.
Awesome. Thank you for your work. All right, we're going to move to National Crime Victims Rights Week. Chief Minton, if you'd come up. I believe Ms. Cannon has the proclamation.
I do. All right. Whereas April 7th through April 13th is designated as National Crime Victims Week, Rights Week, and whereas crime and the threat of violence have profound and devastating effects on individuals, families, and communities in America, and whereas over 24 million people in the United States are touched by crime each year, resulting in significant physical, psychological, financial, and spiritual effects on countless innocent victims, and whereas there are over 10,000 community and system-based victim service programs across our nation that provide a wide range of services and support to victims of crime, and whereas the city of Leander is joining with victim services programs, criminal justice officials, and concerned citizens throughout Williamson County to observe National Crime Victims Rights Week. Now therefore, I, Mayor Troy Hill, call upon all citizens of our community to observe the week of April 7th through April 13th, 2019, as National Crime Victims Rights Week.
Sure. The next one is, Pro Tem Stevenson has it, recognizing National Animal Control Week.
All right. She's got something on her.
Girth hug.
You kind of got something on your shoulder there.
He's got your back, though, looking behind you.
He has outfits, too. National Animal Control Appreciation Week, 2019, whereas April 8th through April 14th is designated as National Animal Control Appreciation Week, and is a time set aside to recognize, thank, and commend all animal control personnel. And whereas Leander animal services officers, like police officers and emergency personnel, respond to the needs of the community, keeping animals and humans safe from harm, and whereas Leander animal services officers help improve the quality of life in our community through their professional and compassionate service, and whereas the Leander City Council wishes to commend each and every animal services unit officer for their dedication to the health, safety, and protection of the citizens and animals of our community. Now therefore, I, Troy Hill, call upon all citizens of our community to recognize the week of April 8th through April 14th, 2019, as National Animal Control Appreciation Week.
All right, Ms. Satterquist?
Okay, this one is for National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Whereas April 14th through April 20th is designated as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, and whereas emergencies can occur at any time, and the prompt response of police officers and emergency personnel is critical to the protection of life and the preservation of property, and whereas the first and most critical contact our citizens have with these services is the Leander Police Department Communications Center, and the safety of the public and the responding emergency personnel is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained and distributed, and whereas telecommunications officers provide a vital link for our police officers by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them critical information, and having contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, the provision of emergency services, and good customer service, and whereas each telecommunications officer has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year, now therefore, Mayor Troy Hill calls upon all citizens of our community to recognize the week of April 14th through April 20th, 2019, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, in testimony whereof, he has affixed his signature.
Well, I just want to say thank you so much for reading those proclamations. We got them all three in it one week, so it's always exciting, right? Kind of do them all at once, but I just want to say thank you, not only for the support you've given me over all these years, but also support you've given our department. Our victim services group was a council action that started from council that requested that, and that's something that was born right here, that we managed to get a great team and put together. So, again, we just want to say thank you, you know, these are, these are the people that are behind the scenes. You don't get to see a lot of them, especially in our comm center and our victim services center, and every one of these have dealt in some kind of experience, you know, they're, they're either dealing with somebody's worst day sometimes, and sometimes they're, it's one of their better days in those cases. So, I just want to tell you guys, from me to you guys, thank you so much. Y'all are what make this department successful and the hard work that y'all do, and I appreciate that because I know that what y'all do day in and day out is something a lot of people would not want to do. So, thank y'all for taking that opportunity for, for showing them your gratitude as well. So, appreciate it.
[applause] We definitely appreciate it. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move to number five, staff reports. Mr. Cagle.
Yes, sir, mayor. I'll start off quickly with single-family permits. For those of you that are a little bit new, this is a busy, busy graph, but January, February, and March contain five years of data for the month. So, if you go to March, look at the one on the far right, you can see that we did 107 single-family permits inside the city limits and 15 in our ETJ. That is a drop from last March of, sounds big, of 21%, but when you look at the year-to-date, we're still up 15.3%. We're on pace to do 15 or 1600 single-family permits, and when we check today, the things that we have in the queue for April already exceed the total for March, so it looks like April could be a record, a record month that we've ever had. So, wait and see how the month plays out, but we can already tell it's going to be big, so while, thank you, some areas of the country may be cooling off a little bit, we're really not. And next, move on to quarterly geo-bond from our 2016 bond election. The first thing I'd start with, the Parks and Rec, and you can see we've clicked three off there. East Crystal Falls Parkway Meeting and Landscaping, Bledsoe Park Synthetic Turf, Mason Creek Trail is now finished. And then on to Lakeway Park, this is under, Lake Wood, excuse me, thank you. This is under construction, an $8.2 million project, and the project is on target. It's approximately 30% complete with an expected completion date in October 2019, and we have, remember, we're only 30% through here, and you can tell this is going to be a really beautiful park. There's some amazing stuff out there, and you're only seeing a tiny fraction of it here. So, that's a construction entrance over by the dam. And so, October 2019, we expect to have a nice ribbon cutting. The Senior Activity Center, this is on, on city-owned land on Municipal Drive, and the project has met the 50% construction design phase, and we're getting close to 90%. And we expect that the construction development phase will take about 60 days, and we expect the bid phase to be late May or June, and construction to begin this summer. Veterans Park Phase Three, construction, we've awarded the contract in March, and we have a target completion date for this last phase of Veterans Park of November 11th, 2019, which you may recognize as Veterans Day. And the Brushy Creek Trail, we are selecting a design firm to finish the last piece of the Hero Way spur. Expect to bid in the summer of 2019 and complete it in spring of 2020. And then San Gabriel Park, San Gabriel River Trail, those are not scheduled yet. They're for the 2020 and '21 bond election, bond sales. And the last one, we didn't have a slide for it, though, is the Recreation Center. We're getting close with ACC to determine an exact location, and our goal remains, within the next 90 days, to have that nailed down in an agreement with ACC, and then develop an RFQ for design and engineering by the summer, this summer, and have them onboard by the end of summer 2019 to start design of the rec center. Now, last phase, transportation projects. So, they're all now in progress, and number one, Raider Way and East Woodway Drive improvements. We are now, plans are 90% complete and under review and pending successful acquisition of easements. And right of way, this project should be able to bid out in August, award construction in September, and commence in October. It's a long project, and we, it's about 18 months with substantial completion expected in March of 2021. Then the San Gabriel Parkway Design and Extension, as you remember, we're building this in three phases. We're building the middle section now. It's under construction, four-lane divided roadway, including a 24-inch water line in partnership with the developer of Palmara Ridge Subdivision. In addition, for the east and west connections, 90% plans for those two phases are in, and we're reviewing those plans. We still need to get some appraisals right of way, easement acquisition, and those are about 30% complete. And once we've completed the 90% review of the plans, we expect bidding and construction schedule, we'll be able to announce that the next quarterly bond update. Hope to bid by the end of the summer and complete by January, the whole project by January of '21. East Street, this is a $3.2 million project. Plans are at the 75% level, are into the city engineer now, and we expect 90% plans by the end of April. And depending on right of way and drainings acquisition, we expect a bid in mid to late fall of 2019, and it's a 12- to 15-month construction. Metro Drive, this one has been long delayed. We awarded the construction contract at the end of last year, but because of TVI's channel improvement project, we've, we've had to wait, but now Chasco Constructors, our contractor, has notified the city that they're ready to mobilize in mid to late April. There is a substantial bridge involved, and all the prefabricated bridge components are manufactured and delivered and awaiting in the Chasco yard, and construction is expected to be completed by the end of this year. Then the, the one that we are all so familiar with out front, we don't need to show any pictures here, the North Brushy Street, streetscape. At one point, we thought it was going to become just a river, but we do have asphalt out, out there now, and we're waiting just on the last two-inch piece, and that should be completed by the end of April. There'll still be a little bit of cleanup, but by the end of April, we should be able to open up the road. It may be a little while before the street lights are... It may be a little while before the street lights are finally delivered and the final landscaping is in, but we should be driving on this road end of this month. And finally, an intersection improvement, West South Street and Southwest Street intersection improvements. And we've awarded that design contract. The design surveying's been completed, and we've got a 30 percent schematic plan in. We hope to bid in January of 2020 in about a six-month construction project. If you have kids at any of the schools in the area, you know that's a problematic intersection. And so, with that, unless there's any questions, I'll turn it over to Mr. Tummens.
Mr. Cagle?
Yes.
Could you please send us those, all of that data to council?
Sure, love to.
I'm writing as fast as I can, but it would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, Mr. Tummens.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having me up here. Of course, been out in the parks this week. Hopefully, you have been driving by them too, because they're packed. Lots of people at our athletic complexes and on the trails and playgrounds, and kids are everywhere. So, it's an exciting time of year for us, and we're really excited about what's happening. So, just a few things that we've got going this month as well. We have active adult trips on both the 10th and the 24th, and then our big extravaganza happening on Sunday, April 14th, 1:00 in the afternoon. Will be from about 1:00 to 3:00. A lot of neat things happening out there. Thousands of eggs come over by our office. You'll see a lot of eggs that are being stuffed with candy and a lot of volunteers helping us too, so that's really nice. April 20th, the following Saturday, our first performance of the park, in the park for this summer season, this season. But we're also kicking off the 55th anniversary of the Mustang from 1964 at Bledsoe Park. We're expecting dozens and dozens of Mustangs, so we're excited to have those coming in. There's several Mustang clubs that are going to be a part of that as well. You can also see we're gearing up for our aquatic season, and our lifeguard training classes are heading, heading full steam ahead, so we've got some great guards and a great aquatic coordinator. The library also does some excellent events, and we're, I don't list them all here, but you certainly can go to their website, check out a lot of those, but they do have a dinner and movie. The Leander Riders Guild, Frog Scales and Puppy Dog Tales is on, towards the end of the month, and then, of course, our adult book club. So, there's a lot of great events happening at the library. And I didn't put on here, but I'm going to mention it if you don't mind, our golf course. This is also their busiest time, one of the busiest times of the year. We have over nine tournaments. We've got, right now, nine tournaments scheduled for this month, so they're hopping. And so, this is a great time of year, and also, if you're a golfer, come on out and golf. So, that's my report. Entertain any questions.
Mr. Tummens, by Mustangs, you mean cars or any?
Cars, yes. Great.
We are in Texas.
Yeah, that's exactly right. I need to keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Is that a car show? Is that the car show?
Well, it depends on how you, it's not a car show where we're judging and awarding trophies. This is a car view, but it's similar to a car show, I guess.
As the owner of a 67, I'm excited.
I'm sorry?
As the owner of a 67, I'm very excited for that.
Okay, good. We hope you're going to be out there too, so.
Yes.
So, it's not a judged event, if that's what you mean by car show.
Okay. You have a 67 Mustang, and you've never brought it up here?
Yes, she's my baby. She stays in protective cover. She gets to go to Sonic once in a while, and that's about it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, Mr. Womack.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd just like to make an announcement that the city is hosting their annual residential cleanup event Saturday, April 13th, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the City of Leander Public Works Facility on Sixth, or at 607 Municipal Drive. This is a free, non-hazardous waste drop-off, and it's for City of Leander residents and utility customers. We do ask people that come to bring two forms of ID, a utility water bill, or utility bill, and a Texas driver's license. We do, we do have, we do accept residential quantities of these various items that you see up here on the screen. They include automotive batteries, brush, and yard waste, furniture, lumber, old fences, motor oil, paper documents. We do have onsite treading for that, and then other paper products, including cardboard and scrap metals and passenger vehicle tires. We do ask for, to limit that to four with no rims. And then, just to summarize the items, we don't accept hazardous or gaseous or explosive materials, narcotics, or glass. I do want to thank several people that participate with us. Outlaws and disposal does provide eight, they do provide 18 dumpsters, the large 40 cubic yard for this event. And I also like to thank Hudson's Oil and especially the Parks Department. They always have a crew that helps year in, year out with this, with this collection event. I also want to mention a couple of other things. On April 27th, in Cedar Park of Williamson County, in the City of Cedar Park Waste Management, they are hosting a hazardous waste collection event there in Cedar Park. So, the items that are hazardous that we wouldn't accept at our event, they do accept those two weeks later.
Excuse me, is house paint considered hazardous?
It depends. If it's oil-based, yes, but water-based paint, if it's dry, we can accept that. Normally, you just have to open that can up and let it dry, so if it's a full can, it takes a while for that to happen.
Maybe next year.
You can paint your trash. That's what we've done before.
So, Leander residents?
As long as it's dry when you bring it in.
Leander residents can take things there, though?
Yes, it's open to everyone in the county.
Okay.
Whereas here, our event on the 13th is utility customers and City of Leander residents. And just for perspective, last year, in April of 2018, we had 1,287 cars come through our event. That translates into 51 dumpsters, 250 tons of trash, 63, over 63,000 pounds of scrap metal, 20 dumpsters of brush, 521 car tires. This event has grown steadily every year, so if you look back to 2015, just to compare it real quickly, we had 18 dumpsters of trash, 34,000 pounds of scrap metal, 329 car tires, and 13 brush dumpsters. So, year in, year out, this has gotten bigger, and we do try to minimize the wait times, but they've grown too. But a tip, the worst wait time we saw last, last year was about 30 minutes. But my suggestion is to come early or come late to avoid the longest wait times. Be happy to answer any questions on our event. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate what you guys do. All right, at this time, we're going to move to our consent agenda. I did get a request to pull item 10 and look at it separately, so this will be all items except for number 10.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Our council member, Never Ready, with a second by Pro Tem Stevenson. All in favor? That says unanimously. All right, we move to number 10. Approval of a waiver of Article 8.04, NOE Section 8.04 dot 001A 11, and the hours of construction work to Stillwater GC LLC to provide for concrete pores at the North Creek Apartments located on Baghdad Road and Hero Way West between April and June, depending on weather conditions, up to three pores per week, requiring Stillwater GC LLC to post notifications, minimum of 48 hours in advance of the activities. Mr. Watts?
Well, Mayor, I would recount that, but I think your announcement of the item pretty well described what's in place, so I'll be, have to answer any questions council may have.
I'm just pulling it up here. I'm the one that asked to pull it. I believe the concrete pores are starting at 2:00 a.m.
Seems awfully early.
Right, and I wanted to bring it to council's attention, because this is an area that we've had some issues with lately with months and months of concrete pores, and the last couple of times, I believe we pushed those back to 4:00 a.m. So, I thought we might want to consider a change in the start time here.
Sounds like a motion to me.
Yeah. And who's the second?
Do we think 4:00 a.m. is working out well?
4:00 a.m. I think 4:00 a.m. is more reasonable than 2:00 a.m. Yes.
So, I'll make a motion to approve it, but setting the hours to 4:00 a.m.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second for 4:00 a.m. All in favor? That says unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Watts. Right, now, we're going to move to our public hearing. Item 14, conduct a public hearing and consider action regarding zoning case 18-Z-036 to amend the current zoning of interim SFR-1-B, single-family rule to PUD planned unit development with the base zoning district of SF-2-2-A, single-family townhouse on one parcel of land, approximately 16.4 acres in size, or particularly describe a Williams Central Appraisal District parcel R514458, or commonly known as 14661 Ronald Reagan Boulevard, Leander, Williamson County, Texas. Ms. Griffin?
This is a public hearing for the blockhouse townhouses located on Ronald Reagan on the west side at our southern boundary. The property is currently zoned interim SFR-1B, and the applicant is requesting a PUD in order to allow for the development of a residential community. The proposed base district is SFT-2A, single-family townhouse, and this would allow for both attached and detached residential homes. Their proposal includes a total of 140 units. This PUD establishes setbacks for the project as well as makes some other modifications. So, if you look at the exhibit on the screen, they've established a perimeter setback, so it's five feet on the north, and then they have a five-foot on the south with their drive along the south. This is a fairly challenging property to develop with the national topography, as well as they have a big drop here. You can see the topography. They are requesting to not construct a road connection at this location, so instead of a 50-foot right-of-way, it would be a drive, so it would be a smaller connection to the north, and that would also change the perimeter block requirements. So, the break in the block would be provided by a drive instead of a street. They're also proposing to change the masonry requirements. The type A architectural component requires 85 percent masonry, and they're proposing 65, and the homes up on the screen would be the proposed building style. Staff is recommending approval of this request. This PUD would permit the single-family townhouse project and allow for their modifications and would help them to develop a very challenging site. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this request at their meeting last week, and the applicant is here to also make a presentation.
All right, at this time, the public hearing is still open. I do not have anybody signed up to speak, but I'm going to offer now. Would anybody like to speak?
I think the applicant was.
The applicant would like to.
Oh, they would like to speak. Okay, sure.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Gary Jones. I'm with Binkham Barfield. We're representing the owner for this property. We've been working on this property for some time now to come up with a feasible solution for it, and as, you know, Robyn's already showed you, this is just kind of an overview of the family home, family townhomes we're proposing, anywhere from two units to eight units together. The property also, luckily, because you guys approved the modifications to Reparion corridor, we do, we do meet those requirements for Reparion. Just want to point out, the 140 units, that is the maximum allowable on this property, is going to be very, very difficult to get. That was based on, in the earlier stages, planning stages for this project, that was more from an economic standpoint. That's what they need to get to make this project work, you know, feasible, so. But there's, I mean, you can see on this, we haven't done water quality or the detention or things like that. They're, they're going to be a challenge for this project, but it is a beautiful project, beautiful property. This is aerial, showing its current drone service or flight of the property as it looks right now. We have quite a bit of drainage coming from the, from the south in two different points that's coming across the property, and that's about an average of 30-foot bluff that's, drops down onto Blockhouse Creek. So, this is like a 3D image of the property itself, and it kind of gives you a, you know, a picture of the vertical that we're looking at. These visuals are always handy to get a feel for what's going on, and you can see the, this is the existing topography, and we've, we use our software to look at grading the site and what it's going to take to actually get a buildable site on this, on this property. Takes, it considers import expenses and export expenses, so it tries to balance the site. And just with using that preliminary software, we've, we've got quite a bit of cut and feel that's going to be required for this project to get it to work. So, these are some of the, some of the pictures from the site that, I mean, it was, if you walk the site down there, I've got some other pictures to show you, but it's, it's really a nice property on that, on that, down below the creek. But this is about a 30-foot bluff. The topography doesn't pick up that in places it's completely vertical, especially where the creek is trying to make a turn there. We're also real excited about, you know, this part, and if you walk this, you would understand how beautiful this, this section from Reagan up around where the, where the Blockhouse Creek Trail is planned. So, that is part of our proposal for this PUD, is to include that piece of the trail that's on the property. So, this is just off Ronald Reagan, looking up, up the, up this property. This is, I mean, it was a really nice day when I walked in. It was, I could just see a trail meandering through, through these really nice trees. And just some other pictures, I mean, it's so, the vegetation is so thick, it was even onsite, it was hard to get a, you know, a visual of the, of the actual bluff that you see there. This is looking from the Box Colbert up Blockhouse Creek, and this is just some other, you know, areas inside where the trail would actually meander outside the main body of the creek itself. So, absolutely beautiful down there. So, this is the drone, another picture of the drone, and the 3D, the drone got, because of the vegetation, got a little cloudy, so it wasn't as effective as I'd hoped it would be, but it still gives you a little visual of that bluff and how it's, how it's coming in the property. You guys have seen this in your packet, but we do have, we do have materials palette with this, that is included with this PUD, so it will be a coordinated development, and just some of the, the images that, that we see on this property. And of course, the architectural renderings, we did have some fun with this because of the bluff, and, you know, you see that the, the patios in the back are actually cantilevered, so we're anticipating that. I get to make fun of the architect for that, sorry. So, just imagine a product like this in Leander that is inspired by historical Charleston with a little Texas farmhouse, one with multi-generational appeal that exudes quality of life, and one that is just kind of a departure from the ordinary. I'd be glad to answer any questions you guys may have.
I have one.
If you could hold on till we close the public hearing. Thank you, sir. Standby. Okay, at this time, nobody has signed up to speak, but I'm going to allow anybody to speak on this item. Last chance. All right, so now, we're going to close the public hearing and move to discuss and consider action on the aforementioned settlement.
Yeah, I have a question about the reasoning why there's not going to be that connection to the north. Because we have, is it because of the topography, or?
The, the, any, any kind of connection through there would have to cross Blockhouse Creek, and there's really not any type of development there that would carry that.
So, that little piece of land to this kind of west of Blockhouse Creek, that's not going to get developed at all?
It's going to be tough.
It's going to be tough, so most likely won't then. Okay.
I have a question about that drop-off in your trails. Is there, do you have railings? What kind of safety considerations have you made for that?
Luckily, there, and where railings would come in would be closer to Ronald Reagan itself. Oh, that was it. So, but luckily, there's, there's enough distance between Reagan and where the, where the Box Colbert is that I think we can get a sidewalk across that. The rest of it, I mean, the bluff is to the left, and I picture the creek, you know, from, from the, or the trail, I'm sorry, from the creek, you know, to the, to the property line, and that's where it flattens out. It's still floodplain, but it definitely flattens out for, for dry weather.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we consider that, and if there's significant drop, that our, our building requirements obviously require steps and railings, but I want to make sure we consider that on the trail system, too.
Yeah, and as you get, as you go up the, up Ronald Reagan, the, I mean, the topography goes, there's a pretty good slope going up into the property, but still, for the trail that goes along, or the sidewalk goes along Ronald Reagan, it's, it's, it's buildable there.
Okay.
Can you tell us what you think the price point of these might?
Oh.
Rough estimate?
I don't know, sir.
Okay. Can you put the drawings back up?
Were these images presented as part of the PUD?
The, the architectural renderings were.
But not the actual that shows where the masonry is on the front?
The.
Yeah.
Exhibit F? Yeah. So I'll go back to that picture, but I wanted to answer this question first. Is this the one you were talking about?
No, the drawing of the elevation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That next slide was the one I was talking about for future reference.
Are they all one-car garage? I see some that are two. It looked like the unit's two and then the others are one.
I think those are shared.
Those are shared, so one car?
It'd be a one-car garage for each unit, yes, the way that rendering is shown.
So the top-left picture is four units?
Top-left would be four units and the other one would be eight. And I, and this, I did, you know, the original intent with this was for fourplexes and a maximum of eight-plex. But I put in the PUD, I asked for a duplex as well because of the topography. I think they're going to, we're going to have some challenges there.
Mr. Kegel, doesn't the city own some parkland in that area?
Back where the connection is dead end, back to the north, they do. And so the trail will actually connect back to Lakewood Park.
Got you.
So our parkland is right here.
Got you, okay. Thank you.
So can we go back to the pictures that you had of not? I see the renderings. I'm talking about the actual photos that you had in there. There.
So these are samples that we picked up of the Charleston-Texas mix that we liked. And that's where the inspiration for this came from. So that's...
I like it. And just, I guess I'm asking because I'm hopeful that that is what you are intending to build. It's hard to tell with this rendering, you can't tell what the material is.
Right, yeah. Yeah, and the, because we, you know, we want to be careful of what's promised here because I'm not the builder. So I, you know, that's why we've, you know, we've had the material palette. And the, but this is definitely the vision that we have for the project. And the actual architectural, this isn't part of the ordinance, but the renderings from the architect are, so.
Do I understand correctly that you're going to be, the streets are going to be made a little more narrow and that it's going to be owned by the HOA and maintained by the...
Yes, ma'am, it'll be owned and maintained by the HOA. And yes, they are, I mean, versus a public street, yes, there'll be, it'd be more like a site plan. So that's the requirements for site plan.
But you also have single-car garages. Are you all concerned about parking? I don't see an extra parking area anywhere in here.
A little bit, yes. Yeah, I think parking is going to be, is going to need, they're going to need to have some more parking on that, so.
How do we address that?
In the site plan. You know, it's, I mean, one of the things you don't want to do is a frustrated development. So I think that's some of the things that's got to be looked at in the actual site plan, so.
And is that why you're assuming you might not be able to fulfill 140 units? Okay.
Okay, so I want to make sure we take into consideration getting a fire truck down those roads as well.
So these units will, because of the single entry, they will be required to be sprinkled. That will be part of the fire code.
Okay, but I guess I'm envisioning there's going to be cars on the street. I mean, it's just going to happen. So I want to make sure that there's enough room for a fire truck to get down that road.
Well, those, the fire lanes are...
With cars on the street.
Yeah, the fire lanes themselves will be painted. So there'll be, I mean, it won't be legal to park on the street.
You want to address that, Robin?
They didn't request any waivers to the fire code. So when they go through site plan, they'll have to meet all of our requirements.
Okay, awesome. I just heard narrow streets. Sorry, while you're here, when it goes to site, there will be adjustments made for parking, right?
Absolutely, they're not requesting a waiver to that either, so they have to comply.
Thank you.
One quick question, Robin, I'm sorry. The driveways, the depth of the driveways, is there any way we can ensure that that's deep enough?
Yeah, to qualify to meet a parking requirement, they have to be at least 18 feet deep.
Wonderful, okay, thank you.
Robin?
He did that on purpose.
Getting your steps in.
I just like your necklace.
Thanks.
Really?
Wow, you just lost a vote.
I had one more question for the engineer. Can we go back to the elevation pictures? I think it's one for that right there. Is that indicative of 65% masonry?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, I had a much more confusing description of that until Robin made me simplify it.
Okay.
She did good.
And then if you'll go to the site plan real quick for me?
The one with the units on it?
Yes, please. I've actually walked this entire piece of property.
You've seen how pretty it is?
It is gorgeous. And there's no way you could make a connection to the north without spending half a million dollars or more on a bridge. Here's my one comment. For those units that are closest to Ronald Reagan, it's still about 30 feet up elevation.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, just for those to start. Is there any way that we can make that Reagan side front of the building look better than what the architectural rendering looked like? Because that's what everyone's going to see. It's just a flat, if we, it's just a flat wall.
Well, and we have, because of the frontage, we have in the PUD, we have additional landscape features along this frontage that, you know, to enhance the, you know, that visual along Ronald Reagan.
If you'll go back to the elevation of the units?
You're tough, Marson.
Sorry. There we go. So the bottom right, that's my concern with what people will see from Reagan. So I'm not talking about doing it on all the units.
What's the distance from Reagan to that wall? Can you approximate that?
It's a long ways.
It is a long ways, but it's up 30 feet and then it's a two-story building. So it's going to be prominent. And then I guess if it's type A architecture, there should...
But it's not. They're asking for B.
Okay.
Well, and the only thing that we qualify on the type A is the...
It is type A, that's what I thought.
Right, type A with a 65% versus 85%.
Okay, my apologies.
You're still required to have five architectural... So could I just request that on that one unit facing Reagan, that something pretty is done? You know what I'm saying, so thank you. It's going to be incredible. The views are going to be incredible. It's beautiful.
No, I don't disagree with that. I think that's reasonable.
Thank you.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve with an amendment that they pretty up the Reagan sidewall. I don't know how to say it. They make it beautiful.
Is that architecturally appealing?
Architecturally appealing.
Do you need something more specific to be able to achieve that?
Can we, can we increase the basic requirement for Reagan frontage to 85%?
Great.
Perfect.
Done.
Thank you.
I can deal with that.
Thank you very much.
I'll second, it's a lot more clear.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Passes unanimously. It's a great-looking project. All right, we're going to move to number, well, number 15 has been, applicant has withdrawn the request, so we're going to move to 16. Conduct a public hearing and consider possible action on an ordinance adopting outside-city limit water and wastewater customer rates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The action before you tonight would create a water and wastewater rate for customers that live outside the city limits of Leander. The recommended differential is 10%. At your February 21 council meeting, this was discussed and you asked to bring it back for final action this evening. In previous meetings, it's been asked and discussed why have a different rate outside city limits versus inside city limits? Our recommendation is that the residents inside the city, Leander ratepayers over the years have invested significantly into the water system, not only financially, but risk-taking and not only building the system, but planning for the future. So it's not uncommon for the owners of the system, the city of Leander, to have a return on investment for those who benefit outside the city limits. In previous discussions, there's been a question asked about our future capital improvement projects that we, significant capital improvement projects, and have we taken those into account in terms of our future rate outlook? And we have, we did that in the 2017 water rate study. But because of the question, which is a very good and timely question, we updated some of the more significant assumptions. See if I can get this right, okay. So the first thing we did when we started with our rate study from a year and a half ago as the baseline, three major projects have had assumption changes. Now, these are not cast and set in stone or finalized by any means, but knowing what we know today versus what we assumed a year and a half ago, three things have changed. The Leander wastewater treatment plant, the cost is, the estimated cost, it hasn't been designed or bid and that's a couple of years off, but that has increased significantly. The deep-water intake project with the Brushy Creek Regional Utility Authority, in the rate study, we assumed, we told the consultant to assume construction starting in 2025, which was a full eight years out. But this assumes that that project construction will start in 2022 to meet future water demands. The other project that is significant in the utility system is the Brushy Creek wastewater plant in Round Rock. The dollars haven't changed significantly from a year and a half ago, but the potential start date has moved up one year. So those three of the projects had some changes. But what this chart shows is that the estimated revenues from the rate study still exceed the revised estimated expenditures over the planning horizon. So that was one scenario we looked at. The next scenario that we looked at was that same chart that I just showed you with the changes in the capital improvement projects. But it also moderated downward by 10% the revenue growth assumptions over the planning period. So in this chart, you see that the lines get closer, but they don't exceed the revenue capacity of the system to accomplish those very large capital improvement projects. So I did want to cover that because it has been asked by you at previous meetings. And the last thing before the public hearing, Mayor, is this is an action item tonight, but there's an option A1 and an option A2. Exhibit A1 would adopt the water and wastewater rates with a 10% differential. If you adopt the ordinance with exhibit A2, it cleans up the language to remove any reference to the outside water rate that's already in our ordinances today. So that's a carryover from when we adopted the rate study. It was put in there in anticipation of future action. So we need to clean that up and remove that once the public hearing and questions have been answered.
All right.
Thank you.
Hang around.
Hang around.
All right, at this time, we do have a couple of speakers signed up. When I call your name, come forward. You have three minutes if you'd state your name and address. Robert Langer?
Good evening. I guess a question before, my name is Robert Langer and I live at 206 Amanda's Way. I guess the question before us is, should the city of Leander impose an arbitrary and capricious 10% surcharge on outside of city water and wastewater customers? But there's also a secondary issue. And that's been voiced by some of the city's representatives in this room. There is an expectation that City of Leander Utilities should make a profit on water and wastewater services. Of course, government does not make a profit. Government is about serving people. It's about maintaining streets and parks. It's about job creation, economic development. Local governments should not be in the business of making a profit. Profit is for companies like Walmart. If cities want to do good, if local governments are to be a force for helping improve our collective condition, yes, they have to stay in business, but profit is not a requirement. The long-term financial health and solvency of the city must be central to every investment discussion, but profit is not something the city of Leander should seek to maximize at the cost of other goals. Solvency is a prerequisite for everything we want to do. Profit is not. As customers, all customers, not just the in-city customers collectively, maybe we are shareholders, but no, we don't expect a profit. We expect a fair price and reasonable service for the product, not surcharges just because other cities do it. Just because you can doesn't mean you should. If imposing fees or charges creates profit, then you're charging more than is necessary to pay for your costs of service since fees should be set no higher and no lower than necessary to fully cover costs. And that includes anticipated maintenance and replacement costs. There continues to be no proof demonstrating service to outside-of-city customers costs more than providing that same service to in-city customers. A city-hired consultant could not supply a justifiable answer for a surcharge and came up with an arbitrary 10% figure. Please provide actual justification that there is additional costs to provide out-of-city customers with water and wastewater. In most cases, there's no additional cost for infrastructure since it's already been provided to the city and paid for. There's obligations already in place to pay for infrastructure from muds and pids. It is quite possible tap fees and other mechanisms should be reevaluated to assess whether they are...
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
The role of the city is to provide a stable environment.
Three minutes, all right.
I understand. Thirty seconds would have been very helpful, though.
I'm sorry. Everybody gets the same three minutes. Carol Mize?
I'm Carol Mize, 121 Creekview, Leander, Texas, and I oppose this policy. I consider Leander my community. I live here. I shop here. I entertain my guests, my family, my friends here. I apologize. So our ransom numbers, and a 10% increase on the water consumption that for this calendar year 2018 would provide $122, less than $125 to the city of Leander. I also went back and looked at my shopping records for the city of Leander. And at a 2% tax rate, I came up with that I provided about $450 back to the city of Leander. And this is some of the big box things, HEB, Lowe's, Kohl's, drugstores, pet stores, the feed store. You know, we have cows, we have pets and so forth. And it doesn't include a lot of the other money that we spend within inside the city limits. And it doesn't include a lot of the other money that we spend within side of the city limits. And this is like venues where we go and eat, where we dine, where we bring our friends to. It doesn't include my, my doctor, it doesn't include my dentist, it doesn't include my eye doctor. And because of the policy that the city is considering, I'm not going to go to HEB and Lowe's and say, I'm not going to shop at your store anymore because I don't think they'll care. But I am going to go to the girl that cuts my hair and she lives inside the city of Leander and say, I'm going to go somewhere else. I'm going to take my business somewhere else and I'm going to do the same with my eye doctor and my dentist. And additionally, my current property is set to be considered inside the city of Leander within two years. So in two years, I'll be part of the city of Leander and I'll be paying taxes. So the net gain for the two years that we're looking at is about, you know, two hundred and fifty dollars for the city of Leander. The net loss for the next two years could be approximately a thousand dollars for money that my family will not be spending within side of the city of Leander. And going forward, even after I'm part of the city of Leander, I probably won't come back. I don't feel like, the city is currently considering me part of their community. And, and so I'll probably go and build my community somewhere else. I'm on the outskirts, but you know, I can go down the street to Cedar Park, to Georgetown, to Liberty Hill. And so anyways, I think the city has some revenue to gain from this policy. I don't know if there's more to lose. And I, this wasn't stated today, but the gentleman did say that last time, you're talking about about a hundred people. So it's, you know, a minimal gain, I think, for the city. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, would anybody else like to speak on this item? Yes, afterwards, that'd be fine.
All right. Kathy Howell, I live in the Pickle Mason House and I'm for this. I'm for this. I just looked up my taxes. I pay fourteen hundred dollars in taxes to the city of Leander. Okay. If I got another ten percent on my bill, that would be about a hundred and eight dollars a year. Okay? There's no comparison right here. The people outside of the city are not paying their fair share. And an extra hundred dollars a year is not even equitable, but I think it is a start. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on this item? All right, now we're going to close the public hearing and go to move and discuss action.
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Powers. Mr. Powers, how much extra revenue is this anticipated to bring in over the next year?
The next year?
Mm-hmm.
It would be one hundred times one hundred and twenty-five, so twelve thousand five hundred roughly.
And a few months ago, when we took the water reserve fee from five dollars down to four dollars system-wide, how much did that decrease what we were bringing in per year?
About two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Round them.
I have a couple of questions. First, if you could send me the rate study because I think that was before I was here. Maybe it's online, but that would be great.
Okay.
And then I'm going to need to schedule time with you to interpret it. But looking at whether it's scenario one or scenario two, what are the growth assumptions being made?
The population growth is in the six to eight percent a year. And that was taken from the Water Impact Study that was completed several months before the consultant finished the water rate study.
Okay, and so scenario two where it's ten percent less, is, is that just the safety of what we're all hearing that there might be a residential slowdown, not for us here in Leander?
No, the ten percent is not a scientific number. It's illustrative of, of a look at if there were less revenue than what was in the, in the rate study. Obviously, the water revenues are a function of the number of customers, the type of customers, you know, commercial, industrial and schools are different than residential customers. And then also the, the per capita use. So all those factors go into the consumption side times the, the rate. So the ten percent would just, it's not a reduction of ten percent of absolute revenue. It's a ten percent decrease in the projections. So it, it could have been twenty percent just for illustrative purposes.
So even if it's ten percent less growth than what we're anticipating, we're talking about an expenditure increase in a matter of two years, from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three, close to ten million dollars, is that correct?
Yes.
And how is that paid for?
Through those revenues, the, the water, water system revenues. Also, on some of those projects, the, the water and wastewater impact fees can pay for a significant portion of, of those projects that contribute new capacity and that are included in the impact fee study. This is, in my opinion, a conservative look because we are not counting on a, a significant amount of those impact fees paying for this debt. So we have a little bit of a backstop if this downturn, if a downturn is more than, than what's shown on this graph. There's capital impact fees that could go towards these three projects.
And so the impact fees are paid for by landowners within the city?
When?
When they develop.
They're, they're paid at the building permit stage. So if you, if you, if a developer, property owner pulls a building permit, any water tap, water meter, then the impact fee is paid at that time.
If someone outside of the city limits, they don't pay impact fees, correct? Their developer doesn't pay impact fees outside of the city limits?
Does our service area cover outside this?
Okay.
So, for example, Lively Ranch is in our ETJ. They do or do not? They aren't connected to our water system, are they?
They, not yet, but they
They will.
They will. Currently, they're paying Georgetown.
Then that impact fee would be assessed?
For anything built after that time. Right now, they're paying the, we're collecting and paying Georgetown the Georgetown impact fee for development.
If I know the way you run numbers, I'm going to say that your projection of expenditures is probably a little high and your projection of revenues is probably a little low because that's the smart way to do it. Is that the case?
I try to do that, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Powers, what are some of the ramifications, if any, of grandfathering these customers into their current rate and this potential rate increase only be for new customers that are requesting permits moving forward? Is that create more? What are, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, obviously, the financially, if you're grandfathering a hundred and twenty-five customers, that doesn't have a, a financial impact on the, on the future. You know, there's a little bit of administrative issues to make sure that, that those accounts are clearly marked and kept up with. We will have that scenario with when the city takes over Rancho Sienna. Because in that agreement, some of those customers have our grandfathered based on the agreement between the Chisholm and Georgetown. They will always pay the Georgetown rate. So there's going to be potentially neighbors side by side that have different water bills. So it's not a financial issue.
Because that would be, if it was a new hookup and an old customer sold their home and then a new person coming in would pay the new rates, correct?
Correct.
That's how it would, okay.
So those Rancho Sienna customers that were taking over though, if they're not moving, if they're staying in their houses, they've not paid an impact fee to us and they will not pay an impact fee, correct?
Correct.
And their rate would be the Georgetown rate instead of our rate, correct?
Only those customers that were hooked up like two thousand and fourteen, whenever Chisholm and Georgetown entered into that agreement. So that pool is fixed from that date and it's actually gotten a little bit smaller, but it's in the hundreds.
And what is that rate?
The Georgetown?
It's the Georgetown outside city limit rate.
Okay, so it's not your city limit rate?
What is it? I don't have it in front of me.
The
Eighteen dollars and fifty cents.
So we took them on knowing that it's going to be significantly less than what we typically charge and that's not an issue, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just make a comment that I think that I, I oppose doing this, but let me just say that I think if this is going to happen, that I feel like anyone who is in the process of future annexation through a timeline, that they should be exempt from this because they are going to be Leander residents. So just putting that out there for consideration.
For the forced annexation, those people who are under development agreements to that involuntary. I had another quick question, not to be doomsday, but when we go back to the image that we were just looking at, there. If we hit another recession, not going to happen, sorry, I said the R word. But let's say twenty twenty-two, we've already committed to the wastewater treatment plant. We've already started the deep water intake. We owe a lot of money. If our revenues from our water and wastewater payments and impact fees cannot cover our obligations, who, who's on the hook to pay those? How do we pay them?
Well, the city of Leander has to, has to meet those obligations.
So the taxpayers?
Or, or the ratepayers.
So just to be clear, if we hit a recession in twenty twenty-two and we're far below what we thought we were going to be receiving, we would have to increase all of Leander city residents' base rate to help cover those obligations?
That would certainly be one, one of the top five, you know, go-tos. You certainly, you look at your expenses, you look at deferring whatever you can. You know, we do have some wholesale water contracts that we've entered into with the city of Liberty Hill and we're negotiating with the city of Georgetown. We don't know how much additional revenue in the future those will, will bring. So, but yes, ultimately, the, the system needs to collect enough to pay its bills.
Is there ever a scenario where the general fund would have to cover?
Cover? I mean, I can envision that scenario, yes, I would hope we would avoid that though.
Right.
Are those dates there when construction starts?
Yes, yes.
So theoretically, if there was a bad recession, you could always delay by a couple of years or something potentially.
To the extent that those projects are not related to, I mean, they're related to capacity and that is, may or may not be impacted by economic downturn.
Have we looked at, so obviously, when you raise the rates, it's something everybody pays every month. You know, I know that impact fees get passed on to the buyer of the house or whatever. So, but what would, have we run any type of scenarios where there was an increased fee in the ETJ or outside? Because it's a one-time versus a, it's that way forever.
An assessment?
I, I mean, I don't know.
An impact fee for those outside of the city limits.
That way, it's just a one-time.
Versus an increase on the resident, an increase on the developer.
And that would save everybody who's currently on the water outside of city limits.
Well, impact fees, regardless of how you call it, water, wastewater, roadway impact, you know, are governed by state statute. So you have to go through a process and adopt that. You can have different service areas. But then the numbers have to, you know, pan out on, on what those differences would be.
Well, it might not replace it a hundred percent, but it might kind of bridge a gap.
With what, with what we know now, the, the two significant developments are the Lively Track and Rancho Sienna. So you had those two had built out and were maybe three thousand accounts. There, there might be other accounts out there, but one-time fees don't add, add that much.
If we don't do this now and we do have this R-word, we can do this later. This isn't like we do it now or never, correct? There, there are options to, to take this into account if it's needed. Yes?
Sure.
If this is, if this is, if this does not pass, it's not dead forever, I guess is what I'm saying.
No, but I think you, you, it becomes more difficult because you have more customers paying one rate. They've, they've made their decisions on where to live based on all the factors that people make a decision.
But the same would apply to everybody in the city. If, if in Councilmember Cannon's scenario, one of the alternatives would be to increase the base rate for all users, it would, I mean, this could still be an option as well. If you're outside the city limits, the assessment could be on those users as well. So I'm just putting that out there as, there's a lot of ways to move the pieces around in this to make things work. So I just want to make sure everybody is thinking about all the different options.
And I also wanted to point out, not too long ago, I don't know if it was this year, last fall, we approved many millions of dollars to begin engineering on twenty twenty-two's deep water intake. Is that correct?
Yes.
Five million or seven million, by memory?
It's, the, with the, the city, working with the BCRUA, borrowed eight point seven million dollars from the Texas Water Development Board in fall of two thousand and eighteen for the, our share of the, of the engineering of that construction. That loan is no interest, no payments for eight years. And then in twenty twenty-six, those payments will, will start.
I think what I don't understand on this is why, if the future finances are such a concern today, a few months ago, when we all approved of a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar decrease in our income by reducing that water impact fee, nobody said a word about the future finances of it then. Thank you. That's just a commentary, not a question.
This has not been a financial, this year of staff.
Discussion tonight is, sorry, I'm not trying to yell at you.
No, 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 I just, I
I appreciate you being in the hot seat.
I'm, I've been expressing my concern partly because I don't fully understand it. And I, again, I think council should have a, maybe after May, a workshop to where we completely understand because we're committing to millions and millions of dollars. I mean, the deep water intake in three years, which is hard to believe, what is the cost of that project right now, today, estimated to be?
The, the cost is, I'm going to have Wayne at, at my back, but it's, it's, Leander's share is in the seventy to eighty million dollars for construction. And it's a four to five-year build. So we would borrow the money in, in twenty twenty-two with the four-year build to be ready in twenty twenty-six.
So between now and twenty twenty-two, for the deep water intake, we don't have So between now and twenty twenty-two, for the deep water intake, we don't have any other um expenses, we're gonna have to pre-approve for that? The eight million that we just did last fall, is it until we start construction?
It's it's that, and then there, we did budget in this year's budget and we've set aside two million dollars um of utility fund uh reserves um to acquire or pay PEC for some construction work.
That's right.
So we're gonna pay um with cash for for that.
And that comes out of
And that's all been set aside in this year's budget.
The utility fund.
Yes.
Do we have enough that we can address this? But since we have a really lengthy agenda.
I would like to make a motion to approve, however, exclude the existing homes of a hundred and thirty-two-ish, as well as any land that was involuntarily annexed and is currently under a development agreement with the city.
I can second that.
We have a first and second, uh is there any more discussion?
Well, I, just so that everyone's clear, um if it's going to happen, then that's the way it should happen. But I'm going to vote no because I don't want to do it at all, so I don't want anybody to misunderstand. Yes, I support that portion of it.
First one.
Ditto.
Okay, so we have a first and second, all in
Hold on.
I'd like to ask for a clarification on the motion with respect to the areas that have been involuntarily annexed.
Yes.
Can we just get a clarification that, from my understanding, what you're talking about is those are the areas that are subject to a development agreement in lieu of annexation?
Yes.
Because they haven't actually been involuntarily annexed.
Yes, and they have, most of them had five years, some had longer, but those are family-run farms, so, yes.
Right.
So if they don't have a development agreement and they're, it's a time process, then you're saying?
They all either ha- were annexed or they have a development agreement.
I I whoever's annexed is in, some people were in by involuntary annexation, they're within the city limits, so just to avoid confusion, the motion is not including people that are actually within the city limits.
Yes, I think if you just say outside the city limits, you cover everything that you were concerned about.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so you adjust the motion accordingly, okay?
Yes, I
Second, all in favor? All opposed? Right, motion passes five to two.
I would just like to add that I want to get this forty dollars base rate for Leander residents down to Cedar Park seventeen dollars base rate. We're already very high, but I'm very nervous about the expenses yet to come, so.
Okay, we move to number seventeen. Conduct a public hearing regarding subdivision case eighteen dash TOD dash CP dash zero zero six to adopt the Messina Commercial Concept Plan on one parcel of land approximately eight point seven three acres in size, more particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District Parcel R zero three two two three nine, generally located northeast of the intersection of Huddleston Road and one eighty-three A Toll Road, Leander, Williamson County, Texas. Ms. Griffin.
This is a a public hearing for the Messina Commercial Concept Plan. The um zoning commission and city council heard a zoning request for this property in twenty seventeen and they approved a PUD with a base district of LC two A Local Commercial. This proposal includes five point seven three acres of commercial development. Staff recommended approval of the request and the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval. This is the first step in the subdivision process, so once this is approved, their next step is the preliminary plat, and I'll be available for questions after the public hearing.
Right, we do not have anybody signed up to speak, would anybody like to speak on this item? Last chance. All right, we're gonna close the public hearing and move to discuss and consider action.
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion approved by pro temp Stevenson with a second by council member Shepherd. Any discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Right, number eighteen, conduct a public hearing regarding zoning case eighteen dash TOD dash Z dash zero one six and subdivision case eighteen dash TOD dash CP dash zero zero eight to amend the PUD TOD Plan Unit Development Transit Oriented Development to establish the base zoning district of GC dash three dash A General Commercial and to adopt the Michelle Tract Concept Plan on one parcel of land approximately nine point three three acres in size, more particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District Parcel R zero three one six nine nine, generally located approximately two hundred feet to the north of the intersection of West Metro Drive and US one eighty-three on the west side of US one eighty-three, Leander, Williamson County, Texas.
This is a a public hearing for the Michelle Tract Concept Plan and Planned Unit Development. This is an amendment to the the TOD PUD and they are establishing their base zoning district. Um, this application also includes a conceptual site layout plan and land use plan that will serve as their concept plan, so it also includes the first step in the subdivision process. Since they are located within the conventional development sector of the TOD, the first step in their process is to amend this PUD to establish a base zoning district. The GC three A zoning district will allow for commercial development of the site and they have a conceptual site layout plan that they've provided. Their request does include a couple of um waivers. They have requested to modify the setback standards between the um proposed townhomes. They want to change that setback to um, I believe it was five feet. Yeah, it's five feet. Um, they also are requesting to um propose a unique phasing, so their phase one will be this portion um furthest away from Southbrook. Phase two would include the extension of Southbrook Drive. And then they're also requesting to modify the driveway spacing to allow for a driveway within ninety-five feet of the intersection of US one eighty-three and Southbrook. So that would be this driveway right here, our requirement is a hundred feet, so they're just asking for a change of five feet. Um, they are requesting that, or they're providing a detention pond, that's a wet pond that would serve as an amenity to the site. Um, staff is recommending approval of this planned unit development and concept plan. Um, this PUD would allow for a commercial development that would serve the community and they are in compliance of the intent statements of the zoning ordinance as well as the goals of the comprehensive plan. And the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval and the applicant's here to make a presentation.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing us to present this evening. My name is Jennifer Jensen and I'm with Poll Partners. Um, before we get started with our presentation, I would like to thank on Poll Partners' behalf, Robin. She has been amazing and super helpful and we really appreciate her guidance. And um we also want to thank her for um streamlining the entitlement process because that will help us get, should this project be approved, shovel-ready in a very reasonable amount of time. Um, tonight we are presenting our Michelle project. Uh, we have worked long and hard on this project and we are very excited to share it with you this evening. So um to present on our behalf, uh Pete Verdicchio is here with SEC Planning.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. In the spirit of being brief, acknowledging the long agenda tonight, I will try to keep this as short as I can. Um, as we noted, we have for you tonight the Michelle Tract uh PUD for your consideration. It's a ten-acre tract. The site plan is in the in the packet. Just a little bit about that site plan, it's a ten-acre tract. As you can see, the site plan um provides four buildings, multi-story buildings. The first floor in these buildings will be retail, the upper stories will be office buildings, so it's an exciting opportunity to bring vertical mixed use to the city. This plan complates approximately a hundred and forty thousand square feet of non-residential use, so it's a significant project, significant opportunity for the city. As has been mentioned, the the PUD outlines in there some variance requests from ordinances. Those primarily have to do with uh building, building design, um parking lots. One thing I did want to clarify, the the setback reduction of five feet that was described, that's only for pavement. So that's not building setback, that buildings can come all the way to five feet, it's just simply the pavement for that parking lot along what's on the bottom of your sheet, which is actually the western boundary that we can come within five feet of that. We still have to comply with screening requirements and that sort of thing in the ordinance. And then a lot of the other ones just have to do with um the the building, continuous building and A-street variances and that sort of thing. But by and large, it it complies with the spirit of the ordinance and the code. Most people would not be able to see and identify what variances are within the PUD. One of the more exciting things to share with you is some of our architectural renderings. So a- as has been noted, we've been working on this for a while and uh with your approval tonight, we are very close to being able to engage the next step in this process and move it forward. We already have architectural drawings prepared, so as you can see from this, these shown here, first floor retail, multi-story, professional use above that, um some nice architectural style, real excited about the opportunity here. And um with that said, with your approval this evening, the applicant will be immediately moving forward with approvals on that phase one building that we talked about, the southernmost building. We are excited to bring retail and office opportunities to Leander and to help Leander expand and diversify the tax base of the city. And with that, after the public hearing, I'll be available for any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, the public hearing is still open, would anybody like to speak on this item? All right, last chance. All right, we're gonna close the public hearing and move to discuss and consider taking action.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
On the PUD, page one B, I see in the middle of the sentence there, it says in the case that this PUD doesn't address a specific city requirement, the Leander Composite Zoning Ordinances shall apply. This is in the TOD, correct?
Yes.
I just want to thank everyone for coming to agreement that that says composite zoning ordinance and not the smart code. And then in regards to the five-foot setback, does the same company own the land where the townhomes are gonna go? The same landowner?
That property's been sold, correct? The townhomes, it has been sold. Um, it's a little hard to see on there, but one of the things that you can see, if you look at it carefully and hopefully on your packets, on your screens, it's a little bit easier to see. Their driveway is immediately adjoining ours, so it's not, again, it's it's two paved areas adjoining each other, no buildings that we'll be dealing with.
Perfect, and then just to clarify, on page three, between phasing and transportation, the last sentence of phasing says the construction of Southbrook Drive will be triggered at the time of construction of phase two. And then E, Southbrook Dr- Brook, I can't say that word, drive, the second bullet, it says um construction based on approved site development plan. If I understand this, Southbrook Drive will be constructed concurrently with the approval of the site development plan.
So the the first, um, the first reference deals with the plating and what triggers the road construction? And then the second reference is the timing of construction? So a lot of times we see the construction plans and site plans actually being built at the same time?
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure the triggers were the same. That's great, and then the sidewalk, when does that get constructed and where is that? Is that phase two, as, is that phased as well?
Do we talk about the phasing? I'm assuming it's that sidewalk? Look at that, first time I'm using that little part.
There you go.
That sidewalk right there?
Yes.
That will be built with phase four.
Okay, perfect, but along one eighty-three, is there a sidewalk on one eighty-three? There is.
And I would assume we'd be building each part with each phase in compliance with ordinance.
Just for clarification, it's not part of the smart code because they're in the conventional sector, which means they follow the composite zoning ordinance, right?
Yes, that's my understanding of it, yes.
Okay, great, even better. There was mention about a landscape screener wall no taller than four feet to screen the view of parking from adjacent right-of-way, and I wasn't clear, that's on page four?
I'll admit I don't have that in front of me, my apologies.
One, that's okay. I just, and it didn't specify which right-of-way we were talking about.
So it should be along um arterials, so one eighty-three, we have that screening requirement. If I'm on page four, which number are you talking about?
G, section two point four one. The last sentence.
So that that should be referencing one eighty-three. That's our our normal requirement for arterials, I think we can make that amendment to clarify it.
That's fine if y'all know what it is, I just wasn't sure what it was referring. My concern is the four-foot height of landscaping I can't see in a little car pulling out, so are you guys?
So that would only be along parking areas? So we would be looking at like this area right here?
Okay. Okay, and then am I to understand we're gonna have three entrances off of one eighty-three?
You have Southbrook, and there's a drive here, and I think that's a drive here. Techstat will have to approve the driveways.
Great.
Will they also approve a right right turn lane?
They may require one, I'm not sure what they're requesting, so it's, okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Great project.
Thank you, let's get it going.
It's gonna be awesome.
Thank you.
Go build it.
Right, we move to number nineteen. Conduct a public hearing regarding zoning case nineteen dash Z dash zero zero one to amend the current zoning of SFL dash two dash A Single Family Limited and SFL dash two dash V Single Family Limited to PUD Plan Unit Development with the base zoning district of SFL dash two dash A Single Family Limited on two parcels of land approximately thirty-five point five three acres in size, more particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District Parcels R zero three one six seven eight and R zero three one six seven six, more commonly known as forty-four fifty County Road two seventy-nine, Leander, Williamson County, Texas.
This is a public hearing for the Mockingbird PUD. The um commission and city council reviewed a zoning case for this property in twenty seventeen and um they approved a single-family limited district on the southern portion of the property. Um, the applicant has started the subdivision process and this portion of the property includes alley-loaded lots and they're proposing to reduce the masonry standard for those lots to allow for Hardy Plank to count as masonry. Um, staff is recommending approval of the request and the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval and the applicant's here if you have any questions.
All right, we do not have We do not have anybody signed up to speak, would anybody like to speak on this item? All right, last chance. All right, now we're gonna close the public hearing and move to discuss and take action.
I have a couple of questions. Please remind me, what are the size of lots for this?
For a single-family limited? I believe they can do, I think it's forty-one feet. Yeah, they're forty-one feet wide. And that's our ordinance standard, so they might propose something like a forty-five or?
Okay. I think that's all I have for now. My concern is a hundred percent cementous. I I love the pictures that they submitted, but I we have a couple neighborhoods going up right now with all cementous and my concern on those smaller lots is
So this will only be um half the neighborhood? So this um southern portion is the alley-loaded portion, the northern portion, they're um single-family compact or urban, I can't remember which district, but it's a larger lot that would be the eighty-five percent masonry.
And so this PUD would allow them to do one hundred percent cementous on every single lot?
Just the southern portion, so the PUD's only for the alley-loaded lots.
I'm sorry, how many lots are there?
A lot, do you know? Sorry.
Hi, I'm Keith Pearson with Ashton Woods. Um, so this project, yeah, the northern third of the project, those are fifty-foot wide lots. Um, the southern two-thirds, those are, they're forty-foot wide alley-load lots. The entire project's two hundred and eighty-five lots. Um, I believe 40-foot wide alley-load lots. The entire project's 285 lots. I believe that the number of the alley-loaded 40s is probably, I'm kind of guessing right now in the 170 range or something, it's about two-thirds of the total project. Excuse me. So, yes, we're just, when we were developing or moving forward on this project, we didn't have alley-loaded product existing for, for these 40-foot lots. It'll be 30-foot wide product. And some of the original concepts that we were, that we were coming up with when we were trying to comply with the masonry ordinance, they, they seemed like there was just too much massing, and so this, this concept of the hardy plank look, we think is a, is a, is a good, fresh look and, and appropriate use on, on this type of small alley-load product. So, on the 50-foot lots, on the northern part, we will have the 85% masonry still in place, brick, stone, stucco type, and then we're looking to just limit this, this hardy product on the southern part.
Do y'all have any idea what the price point will be?
We don't at this point. We just recently got the construction plans for the first phase approved. We're actually having our pre-con next Wednesday, so we're excited to break ground. You know, we're, we're thinking seven or eight months of development, so we're hopefully, we'll be starting our initial homes maybe by the end of 2019. Don't, don't have all the numbers yet to really know where the, where the final pricing is coming in yet.
I, I am confident, because it's Ashton Woods coming to the table with this product, that it will be quality.
I appreciate you saying that, thank you.
I'd like to motion to approve it.
That's good.
Can I make a friendly amendment that we approve the PUD as long as it's Ashton Woods? Is that legal? No.
I will say at this point, and things do change, but it is absolutely our intention that we are the developer and the sole home builder out there. Again, things do happen and, but, but that is our intention today.
So, I'm answering off the cuff. I, I would need to research to give you a definitive answer. My gut reaction is that's really not, it's kind of outside of a zoning appropriate action for zoning. Contractual is a different thing, but if you want an answer to that, I would need to research and give you an answer.
That's okay.
I do have a question.
I was just going to say, with that advice from counsel, I would leave that amendment.
Yeah. I was just wondering, this is another question, it's a little bit different than that, but can we approve this zoning, and if this project doesn't get built, it reverts, say it reverts back to the old zoning? Is that, is that appropriate to do?
Because is zoning transferable, that would be?
So, the zoning will be, when you zone the property, it runs with the land.
Okay, so that's just going to be, yeah.
What you've done in the past is, if you had some issues related to a developer needing to close on a project, then they have to work through entitlements and sales issues, and so what you've done in the past is require, before the zoning goes into effect, either a deed to be provided or to show that the property's been acquired, or if a deed's not provided within a certain period of time, then the zoning expires. So, you've worked through those issues before. If you're going to require the project to be built within a certain period of time in the zoning, and then it expires, you're going to have some grandfathering type of issues, because they may be in progress and not complete by a certain date. So, there's, there's some troubleshooting to be done there if you're going to do something like that.
And then it's just going to complicate the whole thing. So, that's going to be a pain, so.
Well, we have, we have assurance that the developer is the builder.
I had another question for you. So, you know, we've talked about garages for a while, and, you know, what are you seeing as far as the market, as far as alley-loaded product? Because that's been a hot topic, and, you know, I mean, are the customers asking for it, or they?
No.
No?
Honestly, this is our first entry into alley-load product in, in the central Texas area. Some of our other divisions and other markets do it more regularly. And at this point, this is our only one that we are pursuing. We've, we've had other opportunities in other sub-markets to, to get projects with alley-loaded product, and at this point, we're, we're just kind of dipping our toe in it with this project only. We, we're not completely convinced that, that that's, that that is what the buyer would prefer. There are expenses that go into the development of alley-loaded projects, namely the alleys. I don't think anybody denies that from a streetscape standpoint, the, the cuteness aspect of, of the projects, they look really good.
Not with cars parked in front.
But the car parking can be an issue, and I think that the functionality of some of the front and back yards with where the garages are or aren't, it kind of changes your, your use of your yard. So, I, you know, we're excited about this project, we're looking forward to it. We're not, we're not sold on the concept of let's load up on a bunch of other alley products.
Neither are a lot of us.
Yeah, and I, I think if we came in today with a brand-new project and, you know, if we could do 50-foot lots and 40-foot lots and have those 40-foot lots front-facing garages, yes, that is a lot of garage on a small lot, and I understand that argument, but I think that that still resonates to us more, something that we understand. So, this, this is, this is going to be a learning curve for us, too, and I, I think we're going to be successful on it, but I, I don't think that we're totally excited about, about building alleys at this point.
So, that fits in with the question that I had. If I understand you correctly, you said that originally you didn't have a product that would, you know, comport to these narrow standards. So, why are you building this?
Um...
Why not just build the 40, 50-foot lots?
Just build, why are we just building the 50-foot lots?
Yeah, and, and just whatever your normal product would be, why, why change it?
Well, when the project actually came to us, and we, we acquired this sometime last year, the preliminary plan was already approved, and it, it was approved in this layout, as you see, with the 50-foot lots on the upper third and the alley-loaded 40-foot lots on the bottom. So, so we understood what we were getting into, and, and we chose that, you know, let's, let's, let's give this a shot. Let's, I mean, this is a, a good sub-market. At that point in time, Pay Center Homes had shown really strong success in, in their alley-loaded project over in, nearby Oak Creek, and, you know, we, we felt like this was something that, as we continue to evolve as a builder, and, you know, we need to, to do different things. So, so we, we knew what we were getting into. We have had a change of division president, local leadership in our division, and when she came to our division last fall, she was, she was not that, you know, she wasn't disappointed in the project at all, but she was, she was like, yeah, I'm not sure that, that, you know, how this alley project is going to go over. And it's like, well, at this time, this is the one that we have in our, in our inventory, and we're going to get the approvals done and to start, to start development, and, and, and that's where we are. So, at this point, the only thing that, you know, tonight that we're looking for is just, is that masonry adjustment on those 40-foot lots.
I'm fine with the masonry adjustment. I think the conceptual designs were really cute. I think, you know, having something that's a little bit of a lower price point potentially in that area would be great to get some of the more, like, first-time home buyer market.
Yep.
My concern, and this isn't your fault at all, is that along that corridor, we're stacking a lot of really dense projects, and there's no new elementary schools anytime soon that's going to help with the overcrowding that's there. We've already, you know, not even finished widening out Baghdad Road, and that's, I think, going to be a problem sooner rather than later, as we stack more and more developments along it up there. I actually would like to see a reduction in the density and see those 50-foot lots, just to kind of ease that congestion a bit. Just my personal preference.
What, what does it add? What is the, the cost addition do you estimate for an alley-loaded product? How much does it raise the cost of a house? Any idea?
This is totally off the cuff. I, I, I don't know that I know the answer to that, but it, it could be on the magnitude of up to 10,000.
Heard David Glenn from the HBA, he said the retail price is 10. He said the hard cost is between six and eight retail is, they have to add on an additional $10,000 per lot, which then goes to my next question. Are y'all going to be wanting a, a pit for this project?
No.
No?
No, we're going to go just straight development as it is, and...
I'm just wondering, if I'm a buyer, I want a $10,000 in upgrades, not a rear alley garage, you know? I mean, I'd rather have a nicer house inside the house.
Well, and from a market perspective, I want you to build what you know sells, what the market wants.
Yep.
With respect to this conversation, while I think it's, it's fruitful, I don't think this is the forum to do that. They've got an application, we, a motion and a second on the table.
I would encourage that. Okay, but I think, I, I have the right to ask a question. I'm sorry that you don't like it, but I have the right to ask a question.
I didn't say I didn't like it.
He's an expert. I want to get his, I'm talking about his project, so, you know, I think it is appropriate.
But it doesn't pertain to whether it's approved or not. I move to call the question, please.
Absolutely.
But it also doesn't pertain who the builder is.
I'm sorry, the question's been called. All discussion needs stopping. We need to take about whether to continue debating and discussing this, or, and how that turns out, then you will vote on the motion on the floor.
Sure. Okay, a vote to call the question. All right, nothing wrong with a good conversation, is there?
You need to vote to deny the called question.
Oh, to deny the called question. All right. I was done, and you provided some really good information, because these are important considerations. We love the fact that you're here. Ashton's a great product, so.
I appreciate that. I've, we've had a few very positive comments, and I do appreciate that. Let me add one more thing, and it's, it's kind of beyond what even we're asking for tonight, but just to kind of put all the cards on the table. This, you know, again, the idea tonight was to get this, this product, this material adjustment on the 40-foot lots. Once, assuming that that, that went favorably, we were going to consider, in the near future, whether we wanted to come back and, and on future phases of the 40-foot lots, to actually see about eliminating some of the alleys and turning those into front-loaded, regular 40-foot lots. Again, the first phase, we, we are having our pre-construction meeting next Wednesday, and we are excited about that, and that includes a number of alley-loaded lots, and so we, and so this project is going to have some of those.
That actually fits with my next very relevant question, which is, if this isn't exactly what you want to build, do you, it sounds like you want to maybe come back another time and make some adjustments to build something that you're more comfortable with?
I, I think that the approval tonight would be totally appreciated, and that would be a great milestone. And then if internally we decided that we want to come back for another iteration and, and see if the council was, was on board with, with this additional change, then, then we would come back at that time. We're not sure if we want to do that yet or not, but it is, it is something that we've internally discussed, and, and we kind of see it as a, as a two-step process.
I'm very comfortable if you want to do that.
Okay, thank you.
I think that, that's great, that you want to see this process through, and if it doesn't work out, if you get through and, and see that's just not working, I would definitely appreciate you coming back to us and...
Absolutely. We want you to succeed.
And so, just to clarify, you're talking about different phases of 170, 40-foot lots?
Yes.
Yes.
The future phase, which would kind of be, I'd say, the southwest corner
Sure.
of the project, that where those are also the 40-foot lots, but, and, and, and I'm not sure what the land plan would look like to remove the alleys and how that might snowball into other issues, and whether that's even something that we want to feasibly do. But, but with some of the comments here, it, it'll be helpful for some of our internal discussions.
I appreciate your forthrightness and your honesty about that, and that goes right along with what we've been saying, is we let the market drive this. And obviously, that's what you're asking, so, that's great.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. So, we have a motion and a second to approve?
Will you clarify who this, make the second, please?
You made the second.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor? All right, this is unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Welcome, thank you.
All right, at this time, we're going to move to our regular agenda. Item 20, received presentation from Retail Strategies. Mr. Willis, or, I guess?
I'm not sure you need me for this. I'm Aaron Council, and Chris here represents Retail Strategies. They came in today, they toured the town by themselves in the morning, and then with me in the afternoon, and I'll turn it over to Chris and let him go.
All right, first of all, thank you for allowing us to come and present what we've done up to this point. Like Mark said, we, we spent the day here, starting early this morning, the first half of the day, we came in, toured the market, and in the second half of the day, we met up with Mark, and then he gave us a tour, and then gave us his input, and we, we told him what we found up to that point, and so we went back and forth. The rea, and it's part of the process, the reason we do that is to, we want, we want objective eyes on the market. What we found is often, if we, if we only tour the market with our point of contact, or someone from the community, we often get, it gets blurred, so we don't exactly see exactly what we want. So, we, we do both to get the best of both worlds. Let me rewind a little bit and introduce myself, and then, so, we are, we're the team that represents your account, myself, and then Kurt Wilson here with me, and then we work directly, hand-in-hand with you guys. Mark Willis, of course, our point of contact. Mark acts as the, the local expert, because obviously there's only so much that we can do without having that 24/7 boots-on-the-ground experience in the local market. And then we, we work from the 15,000 and 30,000-foot levels to, to complement that. So, the way this is, and this will be, this will be short, I promise, I know you guys have a long agenda, but our process is in three phases. We have a discovery phase, we have the strategic plan, which will, which will be delivered once the discovery phase is completed, and then that third phase is the act of recruitment, and going out there, bringing retailers to the market, and making those connections. And I will step through those here in a second. So, today, well, today during our real estate tour, what we call the Boots-on-the-Ground Tour, is that eyes on going through identifying all the viable retail recruitment or development opportunities within the market, and that doesn't have to just be, that could be brown fields, that could be un, completely undeveloped land, it can be higher and better use on existing structures. So, we go through, collect as much information as we can while in the market, and then we address the point of contact with that information to see what the locals have on that, and then we'll, once we get back, we will go through, contact all of these landowners, contact all of the real estate brokers that represent that property that we found during that tour. This is a brief overview of the real estate, that, these are the actual, oh, excuse me, these are the actual real estate sites that we noticed while in the market. Keep this in mind, this is 30,000-foot level. We collect it, then we go back and start digging. If there's missing information, that's where we'll, we'll utilize you guys, we'll utilize the city, and then our point of contact in Mark to fill in that information. If there are, if there's local-specific issues that might, may be there that we wouldn't know, maybe difficult property owners, that's where we'll pull that information from the locals. Once that is compiled, so, that's, that, that's that discovery phase. Right in front of you guys is a copy of the marketing guide. This had been delivered roughly a month ago in preparation for a, the Red River ICSE Conference in Fort Worth, so that we could go ahead and represent you guys at that conference. Keep in mind, this is, this is a temporary, there will be a final draft that will come out once all of the initial research has been created. But what this does is, this is a one-piece document that we, that we will use, that you guys can use to go out there and market the community. This has everything that a retailer could possibly want to get an initial look at the market. And I know this is, it's very small for everyone to see, but it's got, oh, it has your median household income... And I know this is, it's very small for everyone to see, but it's got, it has your median household income, average, as, this is your population trade area. This is obviously much larger than your population, but, so, and the reason is, this is actually drawn from what we've decided is your actual market trade area. We, and the way that we derive that is, excuse me, I'm drawing. The way that that is derived is through, through data, and then also, various data sources, but then also a cellular data tracking service that we use. And what that does is, it tells us who is shopping in Leander. And so, and that's, it gives us insight as to what the actual market here is. So, and the way it does that is every time someone goes into your Lowe's, your HEB, we're able to, we're able to see that the, there's a ping off of their mobile device that is compiled into metadata that where we can see, so if you have, if you have folks from Cedar Park, or you have folks from Round Rock that are coming here for various reasons, shopping in these locations, it gives us that ping, tells us that they are shopping here. So it gives us, it allows us to pinpoint a much bigger trade area rather than just the city boundaries. Because in the retailer's eyes, they don't care about the city boundaries, they just wanna know where the tax dollars are coming from. So that's your marketing guide. So, once we get back, once that information is compiled from the, once the discovery phase is done, that recruitment plan is delivered to you guys, that's where the real work begins on our end. And that's connecting those, reaching out to those retailers, identifying those for the market, and then connecting them to the local real estate brokers, to those local developers. And so, we could find some, we could find space for them. Beyond that, we, we represent, the cities that we work, work for, we represent them at over thirty conferences per year. And the most, the biggest and most important one is actually coming up in late May, and that is the International Shopping Center Conference in Las Vegas. There's about fifty thousand people that will be there, and it's, it's the granddaddy of them all. So, all the retailers will be there, all the real estate folks from all over the country will be there. So, the timing on our, the timing for this is perfect, we'll be able to get everything done in order to represent you guys at the recon show. Beyond that, as things are coming in, the, the reporting goes to our point of contact, in this case, Mark Willis, in order to disseminate to the city officials, and that is in real time. So that way you know, as things are coming in, you'll know in real time what's happening. And I promise to keep it short, and so with that being said, if you guys have any questions, just let me know. Yes, sir?
So, obviously, you know, it's kind of a circle kind of thing, but daytime population.
Right.
You know, you look at our numbers, three mile radius, forty-seven thousand, five mile, eighty-one, you know, ten mile, two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, I mean, those numbers seem extremely high. And yet, you know, we keep hearing that we don't have the daytime population to support restaurants, for instance.
Okay.
But those numbers seem real, I mean, are those, those are pretty good, right?
No, the, the numbers are fantastic. As far as, as far as population radiuses are concerned, the old way of looking at it was of that top level on your marketing piece, that three, five, and ten mile radius. What's most important to the retailers are those five, ten, and fifteen minute drive times, because that's how quickly someone, obviously, it's how quickly someone can get to those, those locations. But it depends on, it's contingent upon each retailer. Some fast food restaurants, they care more about, they care, they'll care more about that daytime population more so than others. Some fast casual sit-down restaurants, they may care more about it, but it's, it's contingent upon each retailer. But now, as far as, those ten and fifteen minute drive times are fantastic.
You guys work with the restaurants or retailers on location, like, I think initially in your presentation, you reach out to some of them and say, hey, this, this town would be a good fit for what you're looking for, is that right?
Yes, sir, so what, to go farther than that, what we do is, once all the, once the real estate is identified, we will go through and identify for each retailer that we're going after, what that, what the top most probable pieces of real estate that they might use in the community would be. And then, we'll directly reach out to those retailers with that real estate, with basically doing all the work for the real estate brokers for them. And in order to speed that process up, and then on the retailer's side, they have real estate brokers that are doing that same thing. They're going in judging a community by not only data, not only daytime population, but by availability of real estate, by price of real estate, by traffic. So, what we're able to do is take ninety percent of their work off the plate and deliver that to them, where they say, okay, this is a no-brainer, or no way, you know, we're not there at that time. So, and if we're not there at that time, as you guys know, with your astronomical growth rate, nothing is off the table. So, if we're not there now, if we may be there next year, if we're not there next year, we may be there down the road. So, it may be a no, but you guys are one of the, one of the only communities that you can say, okay, we might be known now, but five years from now, we might, you know, have people just beating down the door.
Do you find that, you know, you look at an intersection like where Eighteen Ninety Ranch is, I don't know if you've visited that, but, you know, it's such a mega intersection, right? Do you find that retailers, to me, it'd be nice if they didn't want the competition, but yet we hear, you know, it's a herd mentality, and they tend to show up where everybody else is? You know, do you have any?
That's exactly the case, it's, it's very much a herd mentality, and they want, retailers want the synergy of other retailers, because it, because it pulls the population there, it pulls the traffic there. So, oftentimes, it'll take, it'll take a large developer, or, or just someone that's brave enough to go in there and be the first one to the market, and then others will follow.
Do you find that retailers have old data, I mean, even from two thousand seventeen, that as fast as we're growing, that they don't see these numbers yet, and that impact helps?
I would agree with that, what I would say is, across the board, it's, it's hard to catch up with data, because at the, at the national level, if, let's see, with your exceptional growth, I would say everyone's probably behind. So, what, with that being said, this next, the census coming up is gonna be your best friend.
Do you have an idea of what types of retailers, restaurants, we should be targeting? Not yet.
I'm not gonna answer that yet.
Okay.
So, that's, that's, that's part, that's part of the next, next phase.
Gotcha.
And then, that'll be delivered when we deliver the plan.
As part of your analysis, do you look at land cost?
So, yes, when we, when we identify the properties, so that's one of the things that we want for all properties identified, are the, either the sale price or the lease price, so we can deliver that, because that's one of the first things that the retailer's gonna ask. They're like, okay, how much is this gonna cost me? And if we don't know, then, at that point, we, we lose the legitimacy, we're like, okay, who is this guy? He doesn't know how much this costs, we're gonna move on to the next thing. Because when it, with these retailers, or with the, with the real estate brokers that represent them, they may have five hundred people knocking their door to try to get something in front of them, and so, we may only have thirty seconds of their time, and you have to catch them right there. So if we're missing something, we may have just blown them off, and then they won't talk to us for another six months, so. So that's, any kind of information that is available, we'll have it in front of them.
I had a quick question regarding our current city limit household count. Do you know what that is?
What's that now?
Do you know how many homes we currently have within our city limits?
I don't.
Mr. Kegel, do you know that number?
Not off the top of my head.
It doesn't have to be exact.
It's over, it's around fifteen thousand, sound about right, fifteen thousand homes?
And we, is it true?
Well, that's, I was thinking single family.
Yes, I'm sorry, that's what I mean.
So, okay, okay.
Okay, so fifteen thousand, single family.
Wayne's saying more.
Yeah.
Because I, I think the accounts are, we'll see that, we see it in patch reports, around nineteen, but that includes.
Right, it's the number of, you know, it's gonna be in about eighteen thousand. We can tie it to Pat's water report with the number of customer, single family customers.
Perfect, and then do we still have around fourteen thousand in the pipeline? We used to get those reports, I'm sorry.
I don't know if it's fourteen thousand, but it's just coming hand over fist, so.
That's great.
Sir, do you have, have you all had a chance to look at maybe some of our ordinances and regulations that, that we may need to look at for tweaking?
I haven't yet, but if there's a request for it, then we absolutely will.
That may be something that we look at.
And what specifically are you gonna be able to help us out with at recon at ICSE? Like, are you going to have a brochure, how, how, how are you gonna represent us there?
Okay, so, well, all of the above, yes, we'll have marketing materials for you. What, prior to the show, we'll be collecting active developments that are going on in the community, or active prospective developers that are looking at the community, who we find through the, our real estate outreach. We will, we'll be armed with all of that at the show. So, and then we'll have set meetings with retailers at the show. And so, post-show, this will all come into a, it'll, you'll have a forty-page report, about five pages of it. So, forty pages of the show itself, about five pages is directly related to Leander, what we've, what we found, meetings held, and that will be provided.
Wonderful, that's very exciting, thank you, make sure you meet with Whataburger.
And we'll all be receiving that report?
That will go to the point of contact, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna pun it to the point of contact.
Who's our point of contact?
With, with that in mind, can I just ask a favor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm assuming this is your marketing piece?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you update the city contact information on this, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We don't want anything going a long distance, so.
Absolutely, when we get it, we'll distribute it to all council members.
That'd be great, thank you.
This looks really good, thank you.
Exciting.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. If, if there's anything, you know, when you're out there and you're looking at real estate, or you're looking at different areas, and, you know, you have some suggestions based on what other cities are doing, we would love to know.
Yes, absolutely.
That would be helpful, thank you. All right, I've been asked to take a short break, if we can take a ten-minute break and be back at eight thirty-five, that would be wonderful. We are in recess. All right, we are back in session, it is now eight thirty-nine, and we're gonna move to item, actually, I've had a request to move up, what is, let's see. Twenty-three.
Not Joe Bob's.
Yes. So, we're gonna move up to item twenty-three and then go back. Discuss and consider action on a resolution submitting projects for Williamson County Bond Election, November twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Council, for the opportunity, I got to pray, and now I get to talk about the Williamson County potential bond project. This is my amazing friend, former mayor of Cedar Park, or former mayor of South Leander, Matt Powell. We were asked by Cynthia Long to be volunteers on this bond committee. And I'm gonna hand it over to our Matt, my friend, just go through a little quick presentation for y'all.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Joe Bob said, we have been selected by Precinct Two Commissioner Cynthia Long to represent Precinct Two on the, on the bond task force, and as soon as this thing stops spinning, we will, we have a very, very brief presentation, the spinning may be longer than the presentation, but I'll just get started without it, and hopefully, it'll, it'll catch up with us. So, there is a, there is a group of nine that have been selected to represent the various precincts, so each precinct has selected two members, and then there's a Chair, David Hayes, as well. I will acknowledge, he actually left, we actually have one of the precinct one, the Round Rock members here as well, there he is, there he is, Mr. Fuller, so, so there, I'm, I'm probably gonna grab my iPad, because I was planning on using a presentation, and for some reason, it's not working, so. I have my, my notes on here, and apologies for that, I was, sometimes technology lets us down. So it is a, it is gonna be a fairly compressed process, this, this, this bond task force. The intention is, I could show you on here. So, this is being considered for the November twenty nineteen ballot, and because of that, we're gonna be moving relatively quickly. So, March through June, the task force will be meeting about twice a month, establishing criteria, and as projects start to come in, we will, we will begin creating a scoring matrix, and so on and so forth. Next Friday, April twelfth, is actually the deadline for not only cities, but the various MUDs and all the different entities that have been contacted, to submit their prioritized list of projects. Once we have those, then a stronger vetting process, or a more accurate vetting process will begin. There will also be parks considered on this, but obviously, city input is really not being sought for that, because all of the projects are on county land. And then, July and August, once, once the task force gives a list of recommendations, then in July and August, the Commissioners Court will, A, decide if they like that list, and second, decide if whether or not they want to call a November, a November ballot. One thing for y'all to know is that the heavy emphasis on selected road projects will be the term regionally significant. And, and what does that mean? I actually pulled the text dot definition, and I cut it down by about fifty percent, because as you might guess, it's a whole bunch of words. But a regionally significant project is a project that's on a facility which serves regional transportation needs. Needs such as access to and from the area outside of the region. Hey, why are you there? Okay, can you click on, projects, that'd be great. Cool, yeah. Needs such as access to and from the area outside of the region, major activity centers in the region, you can read it. But, you know, areas where people are gonna congregate, and getting to and people in and out of the region, and to and from other cities, the, those are the, those are the road, the projects that are, that more serve your own city, not saying they won't be considered, but they will almost certainly be scored lower. So, that's not unusual, that's very much the process that organizations like Campo use as well, but I wanted your counsel to, to be aware of that. Next slide, please. There will be a public meeting that is Wednesday, May eighth, from five to eight P.M. It's gonna be kind of a come and go sort of thing, there'll probably be a brief presentation at some point in there. I would presume, I have not worked, nor has Joe Bob, on, with the, with the county staff on, but I assume it'll be much like the various cities put on, where some of these projects will be presented and discussed, and, and there'll be time for public feedback at the rec center in Cedar Park from five to eight on Wednesday, May eighth. So, I would encourage Leander residents to attend that, and if y'all would like to attend, you would obviously be, be very welcome. And I think it might be useful to you guys, as, as well as to us, to hear some of the conversation that takes place. I am, I am interested in hearing where Leander and Cedar Park and Liberty Hill residents, what they say, this is where I'm going to and from, and that, that project would be very helpful, that will, that will weigh with us. And final slide, please. And that's, that's it, Joe Bob, anything to add?
I think the biggest thing for us is that we're representative for you guys, I'm a Leander resident, you guys know that, so, it's gonna be our, our passion to represent Precinct Two with everything that we have, and make sure we, we present what you want, and we fight to get it, right?
No, I think that's exactly right, we, obviously, we are asked in this capacity to serve the county as a whole, but I believe that we were selected, and we've discussed amongst ourselves, to be advocates for Precinct Two. We wanna make sure that the Precinct Two projects get a, a very good look, and knowing that the city of Leander has several projects that, in the, you know, kind of out there cooking right now, that would be considered regionally significant, we wanna make sure that, that your projects, as well as those of Liberty Hill and Cedar Park, get, get at least their fair share of a, of a good look, and we commit to doing that for y'all.
I think Cedar Park's fine, though.
They might disagree.
Just kidding, just kidding.
Is there money for a wall in between Leander and Cedar Park?
You know, I think that's more of a, I think that's more of a park project, Mayor. But, but you are the first council that we're visiting with, we'll be visiting with Liberty Hill on Monday, and Cedar Park next Thursday. And again, with the, with the, the initial deadline for cities to get projects in being next Friday. um, again, this is moving very, very quickly, because we just, we just had our first meeting about two weeks ago, so.
What was the reason for the rapidness?
Uh, I, I can't answer that, uh, council member. Uh, it's when, uh, they decided to proceed with looking at a November bond election, and, uh, uh, I think it just took them a little bit of time. I think they finally decided that in December or January, and it took about thirty days for them to, uh, to vet and select, uh, task force members and for us to, to get together. But, uh, I will say that, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm a little less, I, I was initially concerned with the, with the rapidity of starting in the city's deadline. But I will say, one, that, that's all the cities and, and MUDs and other entities were notified March eighth, uh, of the, and given the selection process. So, this is not, it's not like that you're seeing, that your staff is seeing this for the first time today. And second, I, I, in, in knowing all three cities, I know that your Transportation Department and your City Manager's Office, they have a very good idea at all times of what road projects. I mean, you saw the, the presentation, uh, that Mr. Cagle gave earlier tonight. You saw that.
Mm-huh.
Uh, that they know what's coming around the corner. So, I, uh, once I thought about it, I think the MUDs might be a little more surprised, but, uh, as far as the municipalities go, um, I, I think this is information that if it wasn't already prepared, it probably didn't take very long. And then, uh, and then you've got an, an item for, I don't know if you guys are gonna be confirming that list or what, but, uh, we'll be interested to hear the discussion.
Has the county indicated a total dollar amount they're willing to spend on a bond election?
They, they gave us a range, but honestly, I don't remember what it is.
Yeah, it, uh, it's, it'll be, I'm trying to remember what the last one was. It was, uh, they were talking about something potentially similar in size to the last one. Uh, but off the top of my head, I cannot remember what that.
When was the last one?
Uh.
This is Papa's.
Yeah. Thank you. I think it was twenty thirteen.
Twenty thirteen?
Are you sure, Miss?
Do you remember the amount?
I thought it was in the three or four. Yeah, three hundred million, four hundred million. Pretty soon, you're talking about real money, so.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. I have specific road questions, so if you have something else.
I'm just curious, because I've been asking for a list of priority roads. Um, Mr. Cagle, is there a reason why we're just now seeing these roads and it's due on Friday? If, let's see, we were notified thirty days ago. Oh, no, don't you run. I have questions. No. Um, we were notified thirty days ago. I, I feel like there's not any time for us to discuss this.
You're, you're correct. Um, in order to get it on the agenda, we were, we, we got it on March eighth. What did we have? We had a meeting March seventh. And so, it's possible we could have gotten it on the last agenda, but that would have been as soon as possible. We didn't even have time to.
Even just an email would have.
Yeah, I put it in FYI. I put, I put the letter in, in the FYI, notified everybody when we got it.
Great. Then, I guess my question is, did you submit these roads?
No, that's, we, we, staff would not do that. That's why we're, we're bringing to council tonight to have a discussion. We've put some out there, but there could be other ones that the council may be interested in, because there are funding implications. It's, um, I mean, no one knows. We're all talking about it in, in the cities. Do, do we have to put participation in to, to get these approved by the county? And the thought is, obviously, you've got a better chance if you do, and that's the way it worked last time. So, there are funding, um, requirements along, if, if you want to submit. Unless, of course, you want to submit for the county to pay a hundred percent.
And so, the three projects, San Gabriel Parkway, San Gabriel to two seventy, and then Horizon Park Boulevard, those were deduced by staff?
Yes.
Okay. And knowing that the criteria is future connectivity on a, on a regional basis, my concern is that San Gabriel ends at Reagan and will never connect further east of that, whereas we've been talking about Hero Way and how critical that realignment is with Tech Dot and how much it's, it's gonna be expensive. And that's gonna go from fourteen thirty-one all the way to I thirty-five. So, that seems like if regional connectivity is how they're gonna grade us, that that might be a better option than San Gabriel that.
Our, our thoughts were that's a Tech Dot project, and, and typically, Tech Dot builds and pays for those projects. So, if, if we were to put money to that, we're a very, very small percentage, and that very small percentage on that project would build a lot of roads elsewhere in town. That was just a thought process. It's obviously, if that's what the council wants to do, um, you can do that.
I think they had made it clear that there's gonna have to be some participation from us, and wouldn't that be nice if we could get Williamson County to cover that?
So, I'm also thinking that that project is pretty far down the road, too. I think these are a little bit more.
Well, urgent and. No, Tech Dot is gonna be submitting their plan for our vote this summer. I mean, they've, they've submitted documents to Williamson County that they need to complete in order to get, get started on the engineering.
I think there's been discussion, and I don't, I don't think they have the money.
I'll, I'll.
Oh, okay.
Um, so the, the, the Austin Tech Dot engineer told us that they expect the plans to be finished in about two years. So, uh, and then at that point, you'd, you'd know what right-of-way, if that's the, the thought. But if, if your thought, I see what you're saying, is your thought is just ask the county to do it, and, and with no city participation, that's, that's obviously a, an option.
I'm sorry, you're saying that the, um, the Tech, Tech Dot is telling you that the plans aren't going to be ready for twenty-four months?
Yes.
Okay. I, one of the things we've talked about is the twelve hundred acres that we've labeled on the future land use map as employment district, and how critical it is for us to get services there so that it is shovel-ready dirt for mark and retail strategies. And we know the transmission line is getting put in. We know that we need services down Hero Way. So, to connect Hero Way from one eighty-three A, east of Reagan, realigned to twenty-two forty-three, every company we've talked to has said, how do we get to I thirty-five? That, that's gonna open up a lot of parcels and a lot of available dirt. So, if you're, we're looking at San Gabriel Parkway through the TOD, and then beyond that, it's, I would like to know how, how much is that gonna help us for bringing in new commercial business?
Well, I, I don't think we just looked at this from new commercial business. We looked at congestion on the roads and, and where developments are coming in. So, I don't think anybody argues with what you're saying about, about twenty-two forty-three. It's just, our thought was that was a Tech Dot project, and, um, our thought were projects that were important to the city, and there would be a city match. But if the council wants to recommend twenty-two forty-three and recommend that the county spend, um, bond dollars on that project, absolutely. We, we were looking at, at city projects, so, um.
But the criteria is regional. A- access outside the region.
Right, and those, the ones we recommended were former county roads, so, um, and, and I don't know that we had that exact verbiage that we heard tonight.
What would be the process to, to maybe talk about this in a workshop, a future workshop, or?
It'd have to be quick.
It's, it's gotta be really quick.
Next week. Okay.
I think that i- if it's true that Tech Dot is only gonna be done with designs in twenty-four months, then even more so, I feel Hero Way is urgent for us to be able to open up that twelve hundred acres of, of commercial dirt. Not to mention just moving traffic to I thirty-five and to Reagan from, from the center of town.
We definitely talked about a business park, and it would probably be one of the best things to, uh.
Can I say something real quick?
No.
I, I would encourage you, you're not limi- you're not limited to, you're not li- you're not limited. So, when I say that, I don't want you to say you'd pick a hundred things you want the county to help you with.
But if we pick four, then?
But, yeah, I don't think picking four is gonna be a problem. Uh, then, uh, when you look at the county, the county, we, it was a lot of information at once at this meeting. They have a big strategic plan, and it's about connecting, how are they gonna connect Leander to I thirty-five?
That's exactly right.
You know, how, how is the state gonna help with that? And so, I just, it's, it's not just that. I think you should just put what you, the city staff, who we trust, what they say. But if you wanna add one or two more roads, don't hesitate doing that, 'cause then we'll, we'll take that list and, and advocate for that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Another question I had, um, I don't think staff can put is, you know, we've, we've had a lot of developments, uh, especially tonight on Baghdad Road. And, um, you know, there should be some consideration if we, um, expand Baghdad from where it's, the construction's stopping now, and we're doing high school, up to the Liberty Hill border. Um, and that, that also increases connectivity amongst the counties, so there may be another road to consider.
Would that be considered a, like a regional-type thing, though, or would that, I mean, that's?
Is Baghdad gonna connect to, eventually to twenty-nine, or is it gonna be?
Yes.
It does.
It does, okay.
And it's being worked on right now, part of it, anyway.
We, we, we don't know what the scoring criteria will be yet. Um, uh, and, you know, I'll echo, uh, what Joe Bob said. Uh, if you wanna submit more, we may determine later that the scoring matrix is more favorable toward, uh, certain projects than others. Um, uh, I would also suggest, potentially, and I'm, I'm making no promises whatsoever, but if, you know, a city was advocating for a project on one side, and then it was connecting to another city that was connecting it on the other side, you know, I can't see where that would be, you know, a detrimental thing. Um, but, uh, you know, something I would encourage y'all to look at, not, not for the purposes of this, because the, the timing is short, but just for your continuing education, uh, as, you know, regional elected officials. Look at the county's adopted, uh, road grid system. Uh, it's, it's readily available. If you just Google it, it'll pop right up. Um, but they have a very ambitious grid system, and it has major arterials, uh, uh, you know, that are then supplemented by a very well-organized system of collectors. Uh, it seems so far that what Leander is doing fits into that. Um, but, uh, they made a point of emphasizing that to the task force. And I think that projects that fit into that ultimate grid system, uh, again, the task force, we're, we're gonna decide, you know, what, you know, what, uh, what the criteria are. But I have a feeling that the county transportation staff will be, uh, heavily advocating for projects that fit into their overall vision. And, and I think it's a very good vision, actually.
I'll also make the comment that San Gabriel Parkway, I definitely agree with, uh, Mr. Cagle, that the gridlock from Baghdad to one eighty-three A is definitely a concern and, and should be on the list. I have concerns about ESA there. I don't know if, from one eighty-three A to two seventy, if it makes sense, but I, I, I know it makes sense eventually, but, uh, in the short term, I think some of the money could be used elsewhere.
Um, just to offer a, a couple of things, perhaps the Horizon Park is a little, um, not ambitious enough for this program. But the reason we put it on there is because there are, uh, developers with contracts completely surrounding that road, and they're gonna have to rebuild part of it, but the, the part that goes through the floodplain on the west end of the lake floods and is underwater. And so, asking the developer to bring that part up, out was a little much, but still, um, maybe it doesn't rise to the level of the county bond projects. And I can foresee, if you wanna do something on twenty-two forty-three, and you think it's fifty million dollars of, I, I'm just pulling a number out of the air, I don't know, of, of right-of-way, submit that. And, and, and if that's the county's desire to, uh, purchase that right-of-way for the project, that would be awesome. And then, um, Baghdad, I agree, is more regional than San Gabriel. Um, so, that could be three, that's the portion of, uh, Baghdad up to our city limits, from where we've improved it now, San Gabriel and, and twenty-two forty-three, with, uh, maybe asking on that one, have the county do a hundred percent of it.
If you put them all on there, and they score it based on a regional thing, then that, that may make those determinations anyway. So, put them all on there. Sell it. Sell it.
So.
Now, there's a, uh, I'll, I'll just, it, it, while we're complicating things, I'll throw another wrinkle out there. So, let's say we do Baghdad and, and, uh, San Gabriel, and our portion is twenty or thirty million dollars. What we did in the past is, is that, okay, county residents are voting on this, so it's been voted on once, so we just issue COs to, uh, to do it, because why have another election to vote on the same project? But the wrinkle is, in, in legislation being considered at the state right now, in some of the tax, uh, cap issues, is that COs would now be moved to the operations and maintenance portion of your budget, where general obligation bonds would remain in debt service, and then you're capped on the O and M side. So, it, um, I don't have an answer for that wrinkle right now, but most likely, whatever you submit, there's gonna be some portion of city funding that we're gonna have to come up with some money in, in the future.
Well.
But, but these projects need to be done, so.
On the Hero Way project, really, the immediate need is just one of those frontage roads, three-lane, one of the frontage roads. Then eventually, there'll be another one, and then the six lanes in between. But to open up that twelve hundred acres, and that doesn't include the acreage east of Reagan, to have a three-lane road with utilities is gonna be a game-changer for the city, because that land is not under the TOD smart code.
And, and Mr. Watts sent me some sign language, saying that two years is the environmental assessment. The actual construction plans would even be longer than that.
Yeah, I understood they had started that, but I don't know. So, it'd be nice to nail down those dates.
So, a resolution tonight is?
I could, you want me to try and make a motion?
I would also suggest on some of these projects, especially, you know, a project like Hero Way, if that's something that you want to include, um, you might, uh, ask your staff to provide some different options. Um, because if we, we get down to the end and we have X amount of dollars to plug in, you know, maybe there's a lot of support for this project, but, um.
Not at a dollar amount.
So, yeah, um, you know, having a range of options, um, and, and just thinking out loud here. This is my first time doing one of these task forces, but in my experience and watching them on the other side, um, that was something that was usually very, uh, very helpful. Uh, in terms of resolution, there is no, uh, dictated path for, uh, they're not gonna be scored any higher or lower, whether your council voted on them or not. If you want to do them by resolution, you can. Um, if you want to just empower your staff based on, um, uh, the discussion provided, if that's okay with your, uh, with your legal representation, um, that would work, too. Um, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna read them no matter how they come in.
I think that would be preferable to give staff the.
Resolution?
Resolution going forward, and then we can send in.
I'd like to make a motion for a resolution for Hero Way East from one eighty-three A to.
City Limits?
City Limits. Uh, Baghdad Road from, um, I got, what is it, Collaborative Way?
Yes.
To the northern city limits, and then San Gabriel from Baghdad Road to one eighty-three A.
We understand. Now, also.
Also the two parks.
Trail, sorry. Yes, and those are definitely regional in nature.
I'm sorry, San Gabriel Road from?
Baghdad to one eighty-three A.
I'll second that. All right, all in favor? All right, passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Come back with good news, or don't come back. All right, we're gonna move to item twenty-one. Go back to twenty-one. Discuss and consider action on subdivision case eighteen dash PP dash zero one six to approve the Lost Woods Preserve preliminary plat on three parcels of land, approximately sixty-nine point one four nine acres in size. Want particularly described a Williamson Central Appraisal District parcel R zero three one five seven three, R zero three one five seven zero, and R zero three one five seven four, generally located southwest of the intersection of County Road one seventy-five and Journey Parkway, Leander, Williamson County, Texas.
This request is for the, um, approval of the Lost Woods Preserve preliminary plat. The city council does not normally review preliminary plat requests, but in this situation, they're proposing to remove heritage trees. Um, as part of this request, the, um, application includes seventy-five heritage trees on the site, which is two thousand two hundred and fifty-five caliper inches. And their proposal is to remove twelve heritage trees, which is three hundred and fifty-eight caliper inches. The developer has worked with staff to try to do their best to save as many heritage trees as possible. Um, we are recommending approval of the request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval. The applicant is here for a presentation.
All right, action item?
We need a presentation.
You gonna do a presentation?
Yes.
I promise I'll be quick. And I will admit.
And I will admit, um, typically we would not make a presentation in a case like this. However, when we were at P and Z last week, um, there were a lot of questions about the process and the results as before the commission. And at least in my opinion, it wasn't until we took time to walk through the steps, walk through the process, that, that many of the commissioners felt comfortable with where we were in our request that they did approve it, uh, 6-1. And so with that, I just want to take a moment and kind of be proactive and share with you all the steps that we did take. And, and I'll start with the big one. You'll notice on the, on the opening slide here, we're presenting to you what's now called Lost Woods Preserve. This has been known in the past as the Simpson Track. MI is moving forward and has, uh, re, rebranded the property now. It's no longer known as the Simpson Track, rather Lost Woods Preserve. It's hard to believe, but we actually made the first submittal, uh, to the city in March of 18. And you all remember this piece from last year. This was one that we started very, very heavily, um, high density, very intense, small product alley. Received a lot of opposition and worked through a, a plan with all of our neighbors and city staff and, and your approval in August of 2018. While we were going through that process and, and being mindful and thoughtful of the concerns of our neighbors, we were also being mindful and thoughtful of the existing conditions of the property. Topography, repairing corridors, and, and also trees. And I, I wanted to put this slide up because this shows you, um, today's existing conditions... Uh-oh.
Bad conditions.
Today's existing conditions on the property with the amount of trees. So this shows not only heritage trees and significant trees, but every tree on the property, all of it. And at the end of the day, when the tree survey was conducted, there were 1,439 trees on the property. So when we think about a, a piece of property of this size, we had over 1,400 trees that we were, were dealing with. There were only the survey trees or even trees smaller than that on the property.
Are those hardwoods?
Yes, that's all the surveyed hardwoods. And, and so, what I wanted to do is just take a quick, quick, a couple of steps to show you the process we went through and why we're before you tonight for your, uh, your consideration with the, the amount of tree removal that we are presenting. The first thing that we did is we went through and did the lotting plan, like I said, responding to the comments we heard, and then also looking at it both from the standpoint of significant trees and heritage trees on the property. So although the, by ordinance, we were coming to you about heritage, we also were mindful of significant trees in the process. As we started shifting roads, moving things, are we saving one tree at the cost of three trees? And that sort of effort went into it. We then peeled back the next layer to look at it strictly from the heritage trees, and this is consistent with the drawing that's in your packet that you are looking at and have reviewed. The one step that I did want to share with you because it came up as we were visiting with the commissioners was, well, it looks like if you, if you move a road here, you could save a tree here, well, you're really not going to save these trees here. There were a lot of questions on, on the process that went into the analysis. How did we end up with the roads? And what level of confidence is there that at the end of the day, what you see as preserved trees will in fact be preserved trees? And so we shared with commissioners verbally, because I didn't, wasn't prepared for that step in the process with them, that it would come up, but I, I have it in our, our presentation for you this evening. MI in the process of this design, as we're going through all the other issues, also took a very detailed step that, that many of our clients admittedly don't do. They provided us their residential project, product for the property. We went through and established all the building setbacks, the building pads, and tested every single lot to identify what trees could be saved. We tweaked lot lines, we tweaked roads. So you'll see in some areas, um, where we've shifted roads, pushed houses back, pushed houses up, put shorter pads on them, and that's all been identifying the material they have in front of them.
I commend you. That's a lot of work.
Well, I appreciate that. That's why I wanted to share this with you. That was kind of one of the things that, that came up is, a, a, and one of the commissioners made the comment in his closing, and he kind of almost called it like the voodoo magic. You know, we, we hear the feedback, we work with staff and we work with all, all the people there and all the departments, and then we come in, we share you the recipe, or we share with you the final meal, and it's what were the steps to get there? So I just want to share with y'all the steps that went, um, went into this process. While it sounds like a lot of trees that we're, we're asking for your consideration, we are preserving 86% of the heritage trees. And we've taken a lot of effort to meet with the residents, come up with a plan that everybody likes, everybody feels comfortable with, and, and I think we've done a phenomenal job at saving 86% of the heritage trees and close to 70% of all the trees on the property in this process. And we'll be available for any questions you have.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, this is an action item.
A motion to approve.
A second?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
It's going to be beautiful.
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm, I'm tempted just to make a joke. The Lost Woods development is kind of funny.
Looking back at the department. Thank you very much. Appreciate your support.
Thank you guys for all your hard work with the neighbors on this. That was very challenging and you've done a great job.
All right, we move to number 22. Discuss and consider action on an ordinance to amend section 3.03.032 Building Code amendments regarding guardrail requirements associated with walls and to amend, amend section 3.01.015D regarding authority for the building official to assess penalty fees for occupancy violations and to provide for related matters, Leander Williamson in Travis Counties, Texas.
Good evening, council, mayor. First time up here. So, I'm also going to ask that we table this. We're going to have to get a little more clarity on...
You have to sing the first time.
Sing? You don't want to hear me sing. People tell me, please don't, so I don't do karaoke, sorry. Table this for next time.
Okay, I'll move to table until the following meeting.
Okay.
A second.
Oh, I thought you were joking.
I did too.
I wish.
I did too, but I guess he thought.
We get out a little earlier, though.
He's got that look on his face.
I'm sorry, what is it that needs to be clarified more?
For the legal council.
Sorry, just out of curiosity, before we table it.
Oh, it's a legal thing.
Question clear.
Your, your assistant city manager asked some very astute questions that I would like to get addressed.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Well, thank you for doing that, David.
For sure.
All in favor to table?
To table, yeah.
This is unanimously.
That was a short first trip to the mic. It's like a warm-up.
You win a gold star for the night, David. All right, we move to item 24. Discuss and consider action on directing staff regarding the addition of a grant writing intern to assist with various projects. Council member Shepherd.
I, um, brought this to the agenda because of a joint meeting with the Historical Preservation Commission and the Public Arts Commission, and, um, as you know, they've been tasked with trying to find funding to work on the Davis House. And this was an item that was suggested during the joint meeting of those commissions. And so I just brought it forward for discussion. I don't know, in all fairness, I don't know that we could find an intern that would be a very, um, astute, to borrow your word, um, grant writer. I don't know how successful we would be, but it can't hurt, so it's on the table.
Okay, um, so if, if it's a, uh, a person that's not that experienced at it...
Willverse, yes.
Yes, I mean, who's going to be helping that, the, the intern then?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Um, Kathy Howell, I live in the Pickle Mason House, um, um...
She was at that meeting.
I was at the meeting. I was, I was at the meeting and also, um, I don't know how I get myself in these positions, but, um...
Your mother is Karen Thompson.
My mother's Karen Thompson.
That's the answer.
Yeah, so, um, somehow I have become the representative for both of the commissions.
Yes, you have.
Um, I guess because I'm not afraid of speaking in public, but, um...
You have a lot of knowledge on that.
I do. I have a lot of knowledge. I am, as my grandmother said, I'm an overeducated fool, so that is me. Um, grant writing is a very, very difficult task. Uh, if any of y'all have ever participated in anything that requires a grant, in writing a grant, in finding a grant, in dealing with a grant, uh, every single word is important. Every single word has meaning. Every single sentence, every single paragraph, how you put it all together, what it looks like in entirety. Um, it is a combination of an art form and a science, and, uh, generally, you're talking about very large sums of money that people give you. So i- it's a very important thing to get grants. Um, people, there are people out there that specialize in it. I know a few of them, and, um, they always say you need a professional, always. I've worked on different projects where we needed grants and the people that did the grants, it took them sometimes a year or more to do them. Um, but our community, um, speaking of the Davis House in particular, um, also, um, I know that the Arts Commission has discussed, um, a grant writer for a very long time because, um, there's, there are a lot of grants available for art projects. And, um, I'm sorry, I did not know that this item was on this agenda today. Karen Thompson can take some, some time sometimes, and this week was one of them. Um, I did a presentation on how in other communities, the Art Commission and the Preservation Commissions work together. I, I made that presentation at that joint meeting, and, um, there are things out there that we can do inexpensively, get grants to do them, and it would come more from the artistic side and it would help downtown, it would help Old Town, it would help our, our entire community. And we need to have someone that is a professional at that. Um, we can hire professional consultants to do that. They are very, very expensive.
Well, that's what I was wondering, is it going to be worth it? Over again, I'm going to get $10,000 and want to spend 10?
It, it, um, when we were, uh, in charge of the Alamo, we had a person that, that this is what she did because, um, uh, believe it or not, even though the Alamo is the third most visited shrine in the world, it is still not self-sufficient. So, um, uh, we had a person that that's what they did. And it was well worth it once we decided to take them from being a consultant to being an employee. It really, really helped out. And now the state has someone that takes care of that for them and they have a big foundation that does all that, so, um...
Okay, so... So Kathy, let me...
Yes, sir.
I feel like I need to give an update. So, I met this week with, um, council member Sederquist and an architect from Preservation, Texas.
Oh, great.
And we toured the Davis House.
Great.
And so, um, this is a guy that works on these types of projects. And so what he talked to us about was that literally in his opinion, um, it's not as bad as what it was presented.
Right.
And, um, that there are numerous options that we can pursue, one of them being that we, he can help us write the grants.
Okay.
So there's a couple of different options. You can form a, you know, a separate, um, historical commission, and then that is able to apply for the grant, and then that...
That's done.
Yeah, that, I need to update y'all on that. I was going to wait until we had...
Like an independent...
We have, we have formed, um, Friends of the Davis House. And, uh, Friends of the Davis House is a not-for-profit. Um, I, I'm, I'm the chairman, and that organization as a not-for-profit, the mon, they would be the grant seekers and the grant receivers, and then in turn would give the money to the city.
To the city specifically, just for the Davis House?
It would not be, um...
Well, that would be for this...
That would be, yeah.
If you wanted grants for that house, then it would be specific.
Specific, we could, for Friends of Davis House, it could be, um, specifically for the Davis House. But, um, when I wrote our, um, bylaws and our, uh, mission statement, I made it broad enough that we could support all of Old Town.
Oh, wow.
Um, so that we can go for that. And also, the Main Street program, um, we qualify to be part of the Main Street program. We're kind of under the gun to get the application in. Uh, we don't have to tell them that we want to apply by April, but it would be nice if we did, and then we have to get it in by August so that they can do their vote in October. Um, and in order to co, to comply for Main Street funding and Main Street support, you have to have a joint thing between a not-for-profit and the city. And, uh, Friends of the Davis House would be that not-for-profit that would be partnering with the city for the Main Street program. And the Main Street program is very, very successful.
So he, he was telling us that he can help us apply. Uh, the first step he recommended was to get historical designation, and that's from a federal and a state.
Yeah, the, the Texas Historical Commission, they are the ones that, um, designate it for the state of Texas. And then the National Register, they are the ones that do it on the federal level. Um, my home is on both. Uh, the application process, it's very stringent for Texas and not so much for federal. So that normally what people do is they do it for the state first and then they do it for the federal. Now, um, once we get that historical designation, we have very, very strict guidelines that we have to follow. Uh, so he's definitely wanting us to do that first because he's wanting to preserve it as close as possible. Now, if we wait until after we do work on the building and then apply for it, we're, we're open to do more things.
So if we had a company come in that wanted to lease it, but they want to turn it into an event center and they need to add on to the back, if we have the historical designation, we can't touch it?
No. Um, I cannot replace my fireplaces.
Right.
Because of the...
I believe in some of the colors, right?
Well, no, I would have to somehow find handmade brick, okay? Uh, that is available, but not in my price range.
Right.
He was saying that if you, um, it, because that was one of the questions that, um, we asked, and there was a member of the Arts Commission, and, you know, the question he asked was, yeah, if you get the historical designation, then it totally limits what you can do.
It's, it's very limiting.
He was saying that if you, if you talk to them about what you want to do and you give them the uses that, and make a compelling case that they will work with you on that.
Um, it, that is an individual person's call. It's been my experience that they don't make that call.
Not in Georgetown.
No, they're, they're, my recommendation, and I've done, as y'all know, I've done this a lot, um, would be to do the work and then get the historical designation at that point. Um, because we do want to explore other options. We want to leave our, our options open at this point because, um, we need them.
So, his next step is to write us up, and I was going to share it with council and you guys.
Okay, great.
You know, just his opinions, right?
Okay.
And then, uh, I think it would be good, and we asked him if he would come back and give a presentation to you guys and to us, and I think, I think that would be a good thing to do.
Absolutely.
And, um, so, I mean, I would like to table this and...
Absolutely.
Have that presentation from him.
I think having the conversation is, is accomplishing what we set out to accomplish tonight. I'd love that.
Well, in regards to the Davis House, it does, but actually when I saw this, I thought back to our retreat. I brought up the idea of either hiring a grant writer for projects outside of...
Sure.
Just the Davis House. Or hiring one of these companies that specializes in grant writing for municipalities so that we're not having a full-time staff. And that ended up when, uh, Councilman Siler and I met and came up with the goals for the city manager. That's one of the goals that we put on there. So I was actually kind of hoping that we were going to discuss that and see the future of that because I know there's got to be money on the table for parks, roads, everything when we're rapidly growing. And the Davis House can be a part of that effort along with whatever y'all do as a private commission as well.
So this needs to be a budget item.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm looking at the cost of a position or cost of an internship.
I think we...
Well, and I don't know how far Mr. Kegel is down the road of even looking at that. It was one of the long-term goals. Has that begun, or?
At this point, I haven't, but it, it, it's, if you're going to go with one of the companies you talked about, it's a pretty quick process.
But is it worth it? Do you mind? Like, that's the thing, is, is it all needs to sort of be investigated. And I didn't want to jump the gun to getting an intern without giving you the chance to...
And I didn't want to jump the gun to getting an intern without giving you the chance to take the steps that you need to do.
I would, I would, you know, the thing about hiring a full-time person, it would scare me. Just, do they have enough to keep them busy, you know? You know, maybe we, we find a company that we could contract with that could do it. And then we figure out, how much are we using them, you know?
Well, I will say this. The, the person that introduced this idea is her profession to do grant writing and as a consultant. And her suggestion was for the city to hire the person rather than hire the consultant because of the price point.
So the intern, my worry is an intern means inexperienced. And are they gonna be good enough since we have to be so exact on our wording here?
I, I, I worry about that as well. I, I, I don't think the word intern, I, I would be hesitant with intern. I would think it would need to be a professional.
Let's put this back on the agenda for maybe the first meeting in May. Can we do that?
I, I wanted to add just a few things. And I've been a part of some of the smaller cities that have done grant writing. You're right, for the Main Street program, it could take a year and a half of someone working full-time. There are some unintended consequences of accepting grants. And we need to know what those are before we even try to hire someone. We're not in an opportunity zone like some of the smaller cities. So I don't know what the likelihood is. But if you accept certain federal grants, your city is now exposed to have to have a certain amount of.
Yeah. We, yes, requirements.
Yes, requirements.
But I think there's other, there's, according to the presentation you gave, which might not be a bad thing for us to do at the next.
I would, I would think we, as far as the Davis House goes, I think we need to have a meeting with all of the parties involved.
Well, why don't we check with the, the guy and maybe we could do it in a workshop?
Okay, that would be terrific. I think, I think we do need to have that, have a workshop between council and the two commissions and, and get it all out there. I will say that the original person that brought this up, it was mainly for the arts. And that's all private funding.
Oh, great.
So it, we're not talking about public stuff.
We usually have a grant writer, but then say, dear.
Yeah. And, and I will say that similar to a director of a not-for-profit, almost immediately, the first thing on your job title is you raise enough money to pay for your position. So I think a grant writer would understand that their very first primary job is to raise enough money to justify their position. And I think they all would know that.
That would seem like a job stability inspiration.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Well, this gentleman real, in his opinion, he thought that there was enough grants possible out there to pay for the complete renovation.
I think so as well, I think so as well.
Definitely, yeah, conversation is going in the right direction, so that makes me.
So at our next meeting, can we get some, some prices, some cost?
On what it's gonna cost to hire a.
That would have to be.
Oh, I'm sorry, then.
Well, I think we're looking at doing a workshop now, right?
Okay, I, well, the workshop would be nice to have information such as how much it's gonna cost.
The thing about this process, about the Davis House in particular, is that we don't have enough information on anything. So I, I don't want to rush us through this. I feel like there's enough potential in that building that we need to take our time and look at all of our options. I'd like to see us finish the engineering report that we put the brakes on last year because we weren't sure what to do with it. Now that we've gotten some direction basically from the public that they want to save this building and that we need to do something with it. And of course, I'm all on board with that. We have a Historical Preservation Commission. We need to be preserving the history we have. So with that said.
Well, this guy said he would, he would put us in touch with companies that would do that, like.
Well, I, just so you know who Preservation Texas is, they are the fundraiser, the private fundraising arm of the Texas Historical Commission. So as Friends of the Davis House is the partner with the city of Leander, Preservation Texas is the money fundraising partner with Texas Historical Commission. So you, you spoke to the right person. And if he says that he has funding, he means it. So that's a very, very good sign.
Yeah, I was very happy believing.
Progress, yeah.
Absolutely.
So maybe the work session would include, absolutely, have him there. But then maybe a, a list of steps that what we're gonna do next. Like finish that study and then work on finding somebody to seek out funding. And just put a list together. Because I know that there was, at our meeting, there was an expectation of us to have some kind of answers within like six months. And it's hard to do that because you've got to reach for so many pieces. So I think if, if council has a joint meeting with that subcommittee, then that will have some direction going forward and everybody will be on the same page, not wondering what's taking so long.
Well, he is going to write us a letter, so I'll copy council and you guys. And then we'll try to get him back, which he said he would. I told him to eat at Farm to Fork. I can't remember. Charles John.
I don't know him.
Evan was in, he was going to try to be there, but there's something going on at the Capitol that he had.
Yeah, no, they have a, there's a bill that's presented right now that they are having a panic attack over.
Well, he's been involved.
She's the one that we need to have at the core of this, I'm just telling you. We got the right person, being the liaison between the two commissions. And I'm, I'm excited that we're gonna make some progress here, so.
Absolutely.
We need to set a date for a work session?
Um, well, let me call the guy, find out what his schedule is. But yeah, we'll get it on in May.
That sounds good, that sounds good, Ken.
And so we would take a no action tonight. So I'll make a motion, we take no action.
I'll second, thank you.
All in favor? All right.
Troy, good work.
Yes.
Thanks.
Kudos.
Didn't get hung from the second store balcony.
You can't go upstairs?
All right. Number twenty-five, discussing, consider action on providing office space at City Hall for Texas House of Representatives, John Bucy. Pro Tem Stevenson.
Yes, we met with Representative John Bucy. He was here and he was mentioning that he needed, he was interested in opening up some office space for Leander citizens to be able to visit him and not have to go all the way down to the Capitol since we're the furthest north in his district. So we, we were actually in City Hall and there was an available office that's not being used. And it's not gonna be used for probably at least a year. And so he was interested in that. So we have the representative here. And if you would like to come forward and explain what's gonna go on with that. And this is Sarah Groff.
Welcome, Sarah.
My name is Sarah Groff and I'm the Director of Constituent Services for Representative John Bucy. Thank you, Mayor and council members, for taking the time to listen about our HD 136 District Office. A state representative's district office is an extension to their state office. It functions exactly the same way. For example, the work done in a district office consists of helping constituents, meeting with stakeholders, and researching legislation. And just like every other government office at any level, by no, by law, no campaign work would take place. The reason we approached Leander first is because we have been told over and over again that Leander feels like the forgotten part of our district. A large amount of the constituent mail-in casework that I receive from the district comes from Leander. Also, being the fastest-growing part of our district. And due to that, we hoped that by having our office in Leander, we would be able to host meetings with key stakeholders and highlight the growth and charm that this city offers. The reasons, those are the reasons that we drove our decision to open our office in Leander. We also wanted to provide easier access to all of our constituents as the northernmost boundary line of our district is almost thirty-four miles away from the Capitol. With no traffic, it can be a forty-five-minute drive. With traffic, it's a much more arduous trek. Took me an hour and a half to get here this afternoon. So by removing the burden of transportation, parking, and the general hassle of coming to the Capitol, we hope that all of our constituents will be able to take a more active role in their state government. I appreciate your consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
If I can tag on to that, when Pro Tem says "we," it was she and I meeting with you guys. And I think I'd like, I like the idea. I greatly appreciate the efforts to be engaged in our city. That means a lot. It doesn't matter who holds the office, as long as we have some connectivity to the seat. I think that our citizens will benefit. So I, I'd like to expand on this. The way it's written was name-specific, but I'd like to consider providing office space for our state representative moving forward regardless of who that is. Because I think the city, it, it's a great opportunity we have to do that.
Yeah, and the work that we do is obviously nonpartisan.
No, and, and I, and in respect to that, I haven't seen anything that even suggested one way. I wouldn't know what party our, our state representative represents if I didn't see it on, you know, written literature. Because he just doesn't come in here with any skewed views. He really cares about what's best for us and I appreciate that so much.
I think just to echo that, it doesn't matter if there's a D or an R or an I behind somebody. Having that connection, I think that would be a valuable resource for our citizens to have that connection for someone locally. You make great points.
Isn't it true, though, that most people want to meet at the Capitol when they meet with their representative?
No, not necessarily. I mean, he's had plenty of meetings in the district. We, before, starting now, we're on the floor on Fridays. But before, we were spending Fridays in the district, meeting with stakeholders, meeting with businesses, meeting with, I think he's met with some of y'all here in the district. He met with your police chief and your old fire chief in the district. And so it just makes it easier to have that access for not just normal constituents, but also elected officials and, you know, key business people and stuff in the district.
Couldn't we save the taxpayer a lot of money, though, if we didn't have an office since we're this close to the Capitol?
The money is already in our budget, so if a.
You don't have to spend it.
But if they're gonna spend it when they spend it here?
Well, well, I, I just want to say, I was given the option to meet with Representative Bucy down in Austin in here. And I said, come here.
It's nice, the accessibility is really, really nice.
I, I get all that and I agree with you. But my, my fear is whether being elected official, and I like Mr. Bucy, but whether it be him or, or a state employee or a county official, we're kind of setting a precedent that office spaces are open. And I just don't want to get into that.
Partisan.
Well, it has nothing to do with partisan to me, it's, it's.
I think it could be.
Having a space.
It's a fairness issue. So our Travis County representative could not do this here because this office is on the Williamson County side. And so there's, I think there's a fairness issue that, you know, not all of our, our citizens are able to be represented in this way. Also, in my research of this, I found that typically these decisions don't come in front of council. It's something that's able to be sort of just handled in office. So I don't know, why is it in front of us? Is it because?
It's an empty office right now. Well, we, we.
Is it controversial?
We thought, we thought everybody should have some input on this. Yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, I was asked about this. I wouldn't le, consider leasing a city office to any, anybody without council. Whether, I mean, we've, we've had some discussions about Child Advocacy Center and things like that. It's always come before council. Anyway, that was.
I'd also like to mention, I know the city and council and especially the city manager has been tasked by council to further those relationships with our, you know, elected officials higher up in office. And I think this is a wonderful opportunity to do that.
But what would be wrong with having the office that we're talking about available to any official or even us? The office we have is terrible. We can't meet with people in it. It's a closet that's used for lactating mothers. Like seriously, that's what it is, there's no windows. What would be wrong with just having the office available to any of our elected officials, including ourselves, to meet with constituents rather than having it designated to just one person?
Right, offering, you know, a set day.
Have you guys looked at office space around Leander?
We, no, we started here. So we came to y'all first and then wherever, whatever y'all's decisions, we'll, we'll drive our, our trajectory.
We just approved a really nice office building tonight. We would love to have a tenant, right, when they get it done?
There are quite a few representatives' offices that do government partnerships like this. And so that's why we just thought we would try this avenue first.
I have a couple of questions. How many employees will be in this space?
It'll be myself, at least four days a week. And then the rep will be there one day a week. And then I might have an intern on the day that I go to the Capitol. And she's our, she's an employee now.
She write grants?
She will, write grants.
Okay, and then I noticed here it says you'll pay for office furniture, equipment, and communications, but it doesn't mention rent.
Right, so we would prefer it to be as inexpensive as possible because our budget is very small. But I mean, if we have to pay rent, we will. And that's something that we can negotiate in the lease. But most of the offices, when they do these government-to-government partnerships, it's usually given. The government entity, it's either very cheap or the property is just given to the state rep.
So our previous state rep didn't hold a local office because he, at all, just to save the taxpayer money. But my question is for Mr. Kegel. I am assuming that I guess we start reviewing our budget over this summer retreats. We have got to have a pretty substantial amount of new employees that we need to hire. I mean, we all know that planning, permitting, engineering, they're, they're all new, they need new employees. So my concern is tying up an office, because we're pretty tight tying up an office for a year when we don't know yet how many new employees we're, we're gonna budget for. What's your opinion on that?
My opinion is there probably not a whole lot added on, on that building, but there probably will be some. And that's why I kind of said that I, I feel like there's at least a year there before, after the budget's approved, before you actually got somebody on board, if there was someone in that office. But it couldn't really be a long-term thing. I, I agree with that.
Is that the only open office that we have in the city?
As far as an office, yes. We have some, in, in this building, there's still a little bit of space for some cubicles. And then across the parking lot and on the east end of the building, we'll be dividing up some offices.
We got a really cool historic house.
Yeah, we do have that. That's our plan because when this building was built, these offices were, were very big. They're, they're, most of them are too big for one person. So we'll be dividing those up to get more out of that building.
I think I'd like to make a motion that we hold off on, on granting this. And, you know, maybe come back after budget and just, because I do think we are so desperate for people in different parts of the city. So I'd like to make a motion that we hold off before granting this. Take no action. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of taking no action? All opposed? Motion passes four to three. Thank you.
Thank you very much for asking. Thank you very much for asking and considering. I'm just worried about how much we're growing.
I just want to clarify.
Okay, so twenty-six, discussing, consider directing staff to begin the process to amend the subdivision ordinance regarding one-acre lots and city sewer service or septic systems. So I've been talking to different builders and wanted to revisit this. Mr. Kegel and I have talked on several occasions about, you know, what it would look like. Is, you know, what's the harm in allowing a development to use septic versus city services? And I know we've talked at different times about if it's not blocking anything or if it's, you know, on the edge of our city limits. And, you know, I would like to make it optional for a developer. I think that, you know, one of the things that our other cities that we compete with for jobs, they talk about, about Leander is we have executive housing. And that, you know, our cities around us don't. And I think by prohibiting this in, in a lot of areas where, you know, maybe it's not cost-effective to, to bring the sewer, then we really hampered the building. I think about Greatwood. And, you know, there's eighty-nine homes. They average five fifty to six hundred thousand. That's a lot of taxable value. You know, the, they tend to be lower density, so the requirement for city services is quite a bit lower. It's good taxable value. I, I think we should. I think we should allow it to be optional, so that's why I brought it back.
My input on this is, I understand we're committed, we looked at the numbers for wastewater and water systems, and so the notion of keeping everything real dense, but the citizens have spoken, they don't want a TOD all over our whole city. People like coming here to get acre lots or bigger, and it is cost prohibitive on the outskirts of our city for a developer to have to pull wastewater two-plus million dollars, and then they can't afford to sell an acre lot. The numbers don't make sense. So one of the things we had discussed when this came about, and I was not counsel, so I only have my three minutes, was to set some sort of distance from current wastewater because it, it's incredibly expensive. The numbers average anywhere from two-hundred to three-hundred dollars a linear foot for wastewater, so if you, and let's all remember in the last two years that the state allowed us to involuntarily annex, we involuntarily annexed over eight thousand acres. We won't be able to serve that for a long, long time. But on the outskirts, if we can build a couple other grand mesas, the, the, the cost to the city to service that to our schools, to our police system, yet the property values are very attractive. It will also help Mr. Willis bring in, you know, Apple two-point-oh or three-point-oh over here when they know we have some great executive housing. I just think that by doing the huge annexation sweep, which I know why we did it and it makes sense for the city, we also have to have a little bit of flexibility regarding how to service those. There are, there's arguments that state Texas land law says you have to service them with two years, within two years of annexation. Some will say that means you have to make the service available, well, if the service is two million dollars away, that's making it available, so that argument continues to go. But at this point, we have builders that want to put in executive one-million-dollar homes on an acre or more, and they're on the furthest outskirts of the city, like the mayor said, it's not right in between blocking some other development further on.
So is your recommendation to add a line dictating a certain distance from a wastewater connection?
Yes.
What would that distance be?
I don't know, I put a blank on my notes here.
That's currently in our subdivision ordinance since I believe nineteen ninety-seven, it's a half mile.
Half mile.
Motion to approve.
What's, what are we putting? Just to amend it?
Yeah, to amend it, well, revert it back to what it was prior to, well, when was the change made? It doesn't say in the notes, it was twenty seventeen, fifteen?
Twenty seventeen, maybe, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen, thank you, so just revert back to the original.
So, so even if there's water available, they're not gonna, or sewer-
Water will still get-
Available, and what about sewer, is still gonna be-
It's just sewer anyway.
We're just talking about-
So even if sewer is able to hook up to it, then it's not-
But the issue becomes that on these far reaches-
Because I know if it's far away, there's a, there's an issue, definitely, but if
On the far reaches, you know, those are the appropriate uses, I mean, we've, you
it's right there-
know, we've had so many contentious meetings with neighborhoods that are one acre or they're rural-type housing, and all of a sudden, because we've changed our ordinances, you know, here comes, you know, fifty-foot lots, forty-foot lots, twenty-foot lots. And I mean, we've seen a hundred people here packed in, why not just go back to how it was? Let's get these highly taxable, you know, areas, I mean, you know, we've got enough dense projects, I mean, we, we should be looking at, you know, the outer reaches for the executive-type housing, and again, when you think about the advantage we have over other cities, it's undeniable. I mean, that is the thing that our other, you know, competitors for these types of companies are talking about, we wish we had executive housing, you know, at a, at a mayor's forum, both Round Rock and Cedar Park's current mayor, that's exactly what they said, I wish my city had the executive housing that Leander has. I mean, I don't know why we ever, you know, really cut out that advantage that we have because we look at Crystal Falls, those lots are, I mean, they don't have very many left, I mean-
I think that though, if I'm thinking back on this, the discussion wasn't to limit acre lots, the discussion was not to cut off part of the city by not having a wastewater line or water line brought up a part of the road. So I think that this has gotten some bad publicity with the interpretation of it, that wasn't the intent. I mean, you know-
Unintended consequences, so-
That's what I'm saying, but you, I mean, Marcy, you know how important it is to have that wastewater line come up the road.
What did I just, I'm sorry, but just to be clear, I'm not talking about a piece of property that is smack dab in the way of other property that we need wastewater to, it's our city's requirement that, that when you develop a piece of property, you have to pull utilities to the farthest boundary. So obviously, if we're talking about land closer in, that's, that's not what I'm talking-
All I'm trying to clarify is that this is why the conversation happened, because I think the interpretation is, is not always accurate when the conversation comes back. The, the conversation at the time was how do we make sure that we don't cut off development in part of the city?
Absolutely.
Or have one developer at the, at the end of the line that's having to go through several people that we've just let put in, you know, septic, that they have to bring that sewer way up, you know?
That's what we're doing right now, is we're requiring the guy on the farthest end to pull a huge wastewater line.
But not past other parcels.
Absolutely past other parcels, and then they get to benefit from it. Chapman Parks is a perfect example.
Yes, they could have built acre lots.
So I would like to withdraw my motion and instead make a new motion that this goes to, I don't know if it would go to planning or engineering, to come up with a plan that would allow for the larger lots to have septic. And give us some specific wording of what's workable for you all on that.
I think we just add the language that if it's within a half mile, they can't do it, but if it's over a half mile, then they could.
So I just ran-
And that's what we have right now.
No, it's not, it's topo or floodplain is the deal, we don't have a distance.
But if it's a distance, that's what I'm thinking.
Right, and so Wayne, using rough numbers, because they're rough, if it's two-hundred dollars a linear foot to, to pull wastewater, half a mile is over five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. If it's three-hundred dollars a linear foot, depending on where in the city is and the, whether you need a lift station, it could, which three-hundred is what typically developers use to do their pro formas, we're talking about eight-hundred-thousand dollars just for your wastewater line.
I, I hear what you're saying, but let's get some clarification on what we actually have on the books, because I think there's, what's being said is not necessarily consistent with what we have.
It's right here, we all got it.
But you're saying we can't, that Chapman Parks couldn't have done acre lots, they could have.
What Mr. Cagle said is Chapman Parks could have done one-acre lots, but based on our ordinance, they still would have had to have pulled wastewater line.
No, no, no ma'am.
Please show me where it says that.
Well, it doesn't, doesn't specifically mention them, but it says if there are no physical constraints to sewer service, then onsite sewage treatment systems may be permitted as an exception by P and Z and City Council.
Where? Where does it say that?
That's the last sentence.
It's subdivision ordinance, in the packet.
Okay, we were given-
In your packet.
Okay. Okay. All right.
I guess my question is, how many have we, how, since we changed this ordinance, how many new developments doing one-acre lots that we have?
But I think part of the problem is that there's this rumor out there that we can't do it.
Yeah, we've had one-acre lots.
Where?
The last, last meeting, I believe, the Bonnet Track.
It's Coffin Loop, Ronald Reagan, twenty-nine, that-
Because there's no service near them, right?
Um, they're actually close enough where they could extend it, so they have the choice. So we have a provision that says if you're within half a mile, you extend it, but they're on the cusp, so we were letting them do either.
But again, that, I guess that's my point, is that allow them to do either, because again, if you look at where somebody's going, you know, you're not gonna have somebody buying land in the middle of town doing one-acre lots because the land's gonna be too high, they tend to be out at, you know, Crystal Falls, it's on the edge of our city limits, you know, Reagan's overlook, it's at twenty-nine, it's on the edge of our city limits.
Okay, but just in case, maybe we should have the language written to make sure that it's on the outskirts, the actual outskirts of our city, instead of blocking or put in the middle of it where if the, if the sewer line can be extended, and yet it would stand in the way of another development.
What if we said that if it's not blocking another development, they can do what they want, but if it is blocking a development, they need to come before council?
I, I don't oppose that, but I feel like with the confusion that's happening here, maybe it would be wise to have a work session and actually go over what we have, so that we all understand what we're changing. I'm, I'm not, I'm not arguing that there could be changes. Well, we're talking about earlier trying to keep water rates down, and if, the, the more users we have on the system, the easier that is to happen.
They still have to pull water, this is just wastewater.
But see, that's the fallacy, that is the fallacy of what we did, because I remember the discussion we had, and it was that we need more users, which leads to more dense projects.
I, I hear the argument.
All around.
I do, I get it.
The problem with that is, remember twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, it's the additions to the infrastructure caused by the density that we've additions, the number of people that we've added to the system, that is going to be the hit that we're gonna be taking.
I get it, I get it, and you can, I mean, I see both sides of the argument, and this is one of those things that I don't think is like, is black and white, I feel like let's, let's just look at it so that we all know what we're looking at, and then change it.
So the reason for doing it was to get more customers on the system?
Yes.
That was one of the arguments.
That was one argument. And so that we don't bypass an entire tract, do you remember, Mr. Cagle?
Theoretically, the more users you have lowers the price for everybody, the existing customers, right, or the existing population.
I mean, look, I'm not a wastewater expert, I was given this information just like everybody else that was sitting up here was, and we make the best decisions with the information we have, that's our task. And so if the information is different or if the perspective is different, then let's look at it again. All I'm saying is, I, I feel like there was a checklist of things that, Mayor, I know that were important to you, and I know you're trying to knock those off, but let's not rush through them and have to come back like, you know, Garage Gate. Let's just look at the information.
I think it was good before.
Okay.
Now, I don't know why we-
Can I point out something? Part of the confusion is that our composite zoning ordinance says steep topography, floodplain or other natural features. Our subdivision ordinance says if there's no physical constraints, like I just mentioned, then onsite sewage treatment may be permitted as an exception by P and Z and City Council. So they're not, they're kind of conflicting, they're telling two different stories.
So we have a motion, and I'm gonna ask if I can do a friendly, and that is that we approve the change if it is not blocking-
The new motion was to send it back to staff for clarifying wording that they can work with.
Is that your motion?
Yeah, that was my, you know. Everybody up here can be comfortable with what we're-
You probably need to tell them what you want to clarify.
If somebody wants to build septic, I want them to build septic, because I don't care what they build, it's the market, it's the buyer.
Well, then why can't we just make that motion?
No.
I'm sensing panic, so if we want to like, just clean up wording and have something nice and clear- You're preaching to the choir and arguing with me.
I still think they can build septic, can I read this?
But that's in the subdivision ordinance, it's not the composite zoning.
Okay, so maybe we match the two ordinances and-
The only, I'm sorry, the only reason I brought Paige, this is zoning, it does need to go back through P and Z, so I was just wanting to-
And it needs to be in the composite zoning ordinance, correct?
It's in both, you have it in both.
I'm reading it right now under SFR, and it does not have the same language as the subdivision ordinance, subdivision ordinance says no physical constraints. Stop, you're driving me crazy. Sorry, he's got a squeaky pen and it's like-
My chair squeaks, my pen squeaks.
So the last sentence under the subdivision ordinance, that's real clear to me, it's saying it doesn't matter if it's topo or floodplain, subdivi- composite zoning sounds to me like the only way you can submit it is if there is steep topography, floodplain or other naturals.
So the composite zoning section you're reading, that's an intent statement of the district, so we're supposed to take that under consideration when we're evaluating zoning changes. So it's not enforceable language where you say you cannot have SFR, so when it comes time for development, that's when we go to the subdivision section, it actually has that language that we can enforce.
So Robin, if we changed it today and we said, "You are allowed to do septic if it is not blocking another development," to, if, if someone wanted to appeal that, how would they, is there a way that we can do it where they can come to council for a waiver? Does that have to-
Are you talking about under our current ordinance?
No, no, I'm talking about under a change.
What do you mean when you say blocking another development? Because I feel like if this other piece of land isn't being developed, then you don't know what, do you understand what I'm saying?
But that was part of the argument, where you're blocking-
But if this could be developed and this one's gonna be septic, hypothetically, you're blocking something.
May be permitted as exception by the Planning and Zoning Commission City Council, so they come to the two boards.
All I'm saying is that language needs-
It needs to be over here.
It needs to be over under the statement of intent, because when, when you guys are doing your planning analysis, you're not reference, correct me if I'm wrong, your analysis is going back to the statement of intent and you, you go through all of that.
And we, we also consider the subdivision ordinance and the comprehensive plan, so it all ties together.
I believe, I believe you and I know you do, but I've heard and experienced so many times, so I would like it in both places, I don't think that that hurts anything.
I would just like to revert back to what it was before.
Which is, you can put septic anywhere. But here's the, here is the concern, so, for example, if you've got a large tract of land and you are right on the edge of Ronald Reagan and we've got another thousand acres east of you, if, if you're doing an event center, you can do a commercial septic, and so now for everything east of that, they now have to go another, you know, mile to bring wastewater. So it does make sense on, unless you're on the outskirts of town.
I, I don't think that statement's accurate, it's gonna depend on where the sewer is at, at that time.
Obviously, so this, let's say the sewer's on Reagan, and someone has fifty acres on the east side of Reagan and they want to do an event center or an entertainment, something that they're allowed to do just a commercial septic system on. Now, anyone east of that has to pull the wastewater-
No, they would have, they would have to tie on, the commercial, customer would have to tie on.
Currently, they would have to.
Well, yeah, currently or before, I believe, if the sewer's there, I mean, it's, it's within half a mile, that ordinance has been on the books since nineteen ninety-seven.
So you just said, sure, they can do septic, but they still have to pull the wastewater line?
No, no, I said they need to tie on.
Okay, but if they tie on, they still have to bring it to the edge of their property?
Oh, every, well, but they're gonna plat it, and so if, if they have fifty acres and they're just building one building, they're probably not gonna plat the whole fifty acres.
I just go back to the reality, and the reality is that every development we've got in the last couple of years is teeny-tiny, teeny-tiny, teeny-tiny.
But that's not reality.
It is reality, it's one hundred percent reality. Excuse me?
Isn't that more market demand?
We just heard tonight that it's not.
We just heard tonight that it's not. We just heard tonight that it's not.
But we also just heard that we've had some acre lot development. Come online.
It's.
We heard tonight that.
We haven't had, Grapewood pays too. We haven't had any more Reagan's overlooks. There's no Grand Mesa's. There's, I mean, I.
I guess I don't understand the passion for putting people on wastewater.
Wit Ranch on Baghdad, that one's acreage, and then the Bonnet Track, we just rezoned that one.
And did Wit Ranch have to pull?
They did not.
Okay, and what's north of them?
That's the problem.
I can't tell you. I'd have to look at a map.
You cannot have an eighty tract, one acre lots, and pull it all the way across our town and make money. You can't do it.
Then they can do onsite sewage. It says it right here in the words.
No, no, what?
It says it right here. If there are no physical restraints to sewer service, then onsite sewage treatment systems may be permitted as an exception.
Well, nobody's bringing them forward.
Because it's over here in the subdivision. It's not over here, and I know what she's saying is we may have had some issues.
Okay. How about if we table this till the, let's do a workshop. I I think we need.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Um, let's do a workshop before the next meeting. I'd like to hear from some of the developer or some of the builders that are doing one acre lots and invite them. And let's hear, why are they not, you know, what is it? Why?
Whatever they feel like they, yeah.
Okay, but let's have staff there too to respond.
Okay.
Because it's it's not gonna do us any good to get half the information.
Sure. We'll try to bring as much information for as we can about existing developments, so we can.
Okay. Sounds good. So no action tonight?
And it would be nice to have um the full, I guess, the previous one to compare it to, what we, what we did.
Maybe the son of a son.
And, yeah, that would be great.
And do do we need to set a date?
Uh, yeah, we'll do it on the next meeting. We don't have a workshop.
Are we doing a work? I just need clarification. Are you making a motion to do a workshop?
Yes.
On the eighteenth.
Yes, on the eighteenth.
Okay, so you've made a motion to do a workshop on the eighteenth.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor? All right. That wasn't so bad. Okay.
I just wanna make sure we all have the same information that we're making educated changes.
Okay, discussing considering initiating a nominal fee for an open records request. Councilmember Cannon.
So I recently went to T M L conference and um a lot of cities are dealing with this issue right now where they're bombarded with open records requests, which is fine. That's what we're all about, transparency. So I wanna be crystal clear. I'm not saying to slow down any kind of transparency. I asked our city manager how much, just average, stab in the dark, how much time, i.e. dollars, taxpayer dollars, are being sent on um open records requests. And and we, as council, every week, we get a list of all the open records requests. Ninety percent of them are easy and and from press or whatever it is. There are some that are much more difficult and require a lot of time. And um so I started asking around. Seems like every other city uses the Texas Administrative Code to charge for these. I I still would like the city manager to give us some idea of how much this is costing taxpayers, because I know it costs me a couple hours every two weeks, so I can only imagine, 'cause I see the list. Um Cedar Park charges, Round Rock charges, Georgetown charges, um Hutto, Temple, Flower Mound. I was trying to find cities that are close to our size. Flower Mound does. Um, it's very common. There's a formula you use. I think a bigger issue is that this needs to be automated somehow. And Mike's back there smiling, or somebody, we need it automated. We are getting to the size this city is that we need to automate as much as possible. We need to post as as much public records online like Georgetown does. You don't even have to request. Most everything is already posted online. Um, but I think that's maybe for our budget meetings later on in the year. Um, but I think it's, I brought it up, because it is, I'm telling you, it's costing the taxpayers a lot of time and money. Last year, we had four hundred and eighty-five requests, and may I say that per request, you can list ten totally different um topics per request. Um, so far this first quarter, we've received a hundred and six requests. So again, there could be one request, but it could have five totally different topics that you're tracking down. So that's why I brought it up.
Ms. Cannon, just for clarification, the um document that's in the packet, is this what we charge now? Is this?
No, this is what, we don't charge, correct? We don't charge.
We charge when we can. There's very specific guidelines when you can and cannot charge. Because most records are all electronic, you cannot charge. It's printed copies are ten cents a page. Over fifty pages, then you can charge fifteen dollars an hour and twenty percent in straight charges. But you must give them hard copies, and there's very specific guidelines for when you can and cannot charge.
Because we're just following the state of Texas rules.
So is this paper what we charge now?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And and that's interesting, because when I downloaded the form online for the open records request, it had cost in the bottom corner, but I couldn't find anywhere where we have a fee breakdown.
We charge, it's in uh fee schedule.
Okay.
Look in the zoning under the fee and the code of ordinances.
In the code of ordinances, under Franklin dot net. Okay, so it's kind of hard to find the actual state, and I'll send council what I got back from T M L's attorneys. Um, there's a lot of different links, but um you can charge for labor at a s- at at certain points. But the state of Texas has a whole automated system where you can enter in what it is you're requesting, and it'll give you an estimate of of what it is going to cost. It isn't simple to do, and I certainly don't wanna cause more work and more effort. But again, I think it's important that taxpayers know how much time is spent on this manual collection of of data.
What are you proposing?
I'm proposing that staff uh follow up with the P I A handbook with all the links that T M L's council sent me today and look at the cost estimate model and let us know what it looks like. I if if we hear back from uh Ms. Crabtree that, listen, this works if you're on an automated system. I I understand that, then good. Now we know, let's put it on the list for something to do. But we're just, we're we're getting too big not to um be protecting ourselves. I don't know how she has time to do it.
So so to make it clear, Dara, we are currently charging as much as we can charge legally. Okay.
So I'm not, I'm not understanding what you want to change.
Well, and I I know that you know that. I I've read quite a bit of other things that you can charge two dollars per labor hour. There's.
There's labor charges in here.
And so are you charging?
I'd like to charge two dollars per hour.
Can you, do you have, we can hear you.
So there's very specific guidelines when you can charge and when you can't charge. One of them is printed copies. If all we're doing is sending them electronic copies where there's no redaction or anything involved, you cannot charge for those records. We also redact electronically, so we're not printing anything. We have software that redacts electronically, which eliminates us able to charge as well. When we are able to charge, we do charge. But there's not a whole lot of times with records that are being requested that we're able to charge because of what they're requesting and what's going out now we're presenting it. So we have had people where have gotten records where we charge for DVDs for um things from the police department where they request a large, a bunch of photos and stuff with things. When we have to put it on a thumb drive, we charge them the cost of the thumb drive. But we are within the guidelines of the A G of when we can and cannot charge.
And so on this charge sheet that you had attached here under labor charge, it says for locating, compiling, and reproducing fifteen dollars an hour.
We're not reproducing. Reproducing is making copies and doing things of that. When you are doing nothing but taking an email or a letter that's electronically, then that's not considered reproducing.
So gathering all of that information and creating it into a a single PDF file, like I do on mine, right? I put it all into one file instead of sending you twenty files. That's not reproducing. I just reproduced a document.
It's all electronic. They they consider that click of buttons on there. It's not the same thing as reproducing, that you have to go and get it and make Xerox copies and manually redact and reproduce it in a manner to give hard copies. When it's all electronic, they don't consider that reproducing. And it's fifty pages before it counts as you can charge fifteen dollars an hour and twenty percent overhead.
On the um overhead charge of twenty percent of labor.
Yes.
It's a shame we can't put it in our utility fund. We can pay off all the infrastructure accounts we were trying to pay off early.
And the computer resource charge. Like I said, the T M L counselor said you absolutely can charge. Other cities are, I I guess I would like to see our fees posted where the form is online. Because nobody knows where it is.
So most of them are electronic?
Ninety-seven percent of it.
Is that because of the charge?
No, it's just people do email on electronic now. And most of the city records are all electronic as far as correspondence is now is greatly done via email or people writing letters and emailing the letters over versus mailing hard copies in. We scan in contracts. Once they're executed, we scan them in, and they're in Laserfish and they're electronic now.
Okay, I will send this email from T M L to council, and I would just um ask that you look at it and just double. Double check um. Fee aside, I think we're coming up into a place very quickly where we we need to automate more things. We need to have more things just available online. Georgetown does a pretty good job of it, and I don't know what system they use, but it's easy to search. You and I have discussed that before. So if if I wanna search on um a specific project and it has a project number, and I wanna search our website for everything on there, it's very difficult to find.
We are moving Laserfish. We have it electronically, and it won't be immediate, because we're just got departments coming on, but we will in the future have a public portal for people to research. But that's several years out.
Oh, it is. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so no action tonight?
No action.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion of no action.
Second. All in favor? I think I'm gonna go back to smoke signals. Try to do an open records on that one, you know? Um, okay, so let's just go to twenty-eight, discuss ethics disclosure form. Councilmember Cannon.
Yes, okay, so we had an interesting situation where um I disclosed a conflict of interest with a landowner who I represented in selling land to last year. I don't have an ongoing relationship, uh financial relationship with them. They came up for zoning, and um of course, I signed my disclosure. They wanted to sign their disclosure, but they were given a form that doesn't apply, um because they were not a vendor doing business with the city. And so that was the delay in trying, how how do we do this? How do they disclose this? I couldn't believe this was the first time ever, because I know Councilmember Shepherd has recused herself, and I'm not sure if your client at that point signed a.
I didn't have a client.
Okay, great.
It was the the one that you're speaking of was we represented a seller of a residential property. It sold as residential property, and the buyer then came back and wanted rezoning. So because I had been involved in that transaction, I accused myself, but.
That's exactly what happened to me. I sold a piece of land to a.
You represented the buyer.
I represented the buyer.
So the buyer was then the applicant. That's what I'm saying. I represented the seller, so they hadn't, they were not involved in that.
Okay. So regardless, you were involved in the transaction, like Mr. Cagle pointed out. Even though I wasn't paid by the buyer, the way it works, you're paid by the seller. It doesn't matter. As part of the transaction, I wanted to make it clear to everyone, and the landowner had no problem signing any sort of disclosure. The problem came when it, the the C I Q form did not apply to them, 'cause they weren't doing, a vendor doing business. Our attorney Paige can maybe help us.
Yeah, I think this is a legal question.
It is, but I wanted to bring it up, because I don't, I didn't want a landowner being portrayed like they were holding out on signing any sort of disclosure, because because they had, do you mind coming up, please? They had requested of the city, what do you want? Do you want this in a letter? Do you want whatever? And so.
Uh, they sent an email, and we've got applications that advise applicants of disclosures that need to be made. They provided an email. Um, we discussed a form, what should be, what should be required. And so I thought, well, let's prepare a form so that we can attach it to the application, and that can be used going forward. It might make it easier for people to to make these disclosures. And so the preparation of that form was um came after they had sent the email. And so that delayed a little bit their, getting their their second disclosure in by the form.
So you created a brand-new disclosure form that Ethics hasn't seen, Ethics Commission hasn't seen, Council hasn't seen. I trust you great. It was a disclosure form, but they got it the night before at five forty-five, and it needed to be notarized, and our current disclosure forms don't require notary. So it it was hoops that we put a landowner through who was trying to disclose weeks before, so.
It was an attempt to assist with making it easier for people to make disclosures, and so that's why that was done.
Absolutely.
The question about whether it should be notarized or not, that's, I mean, council uses forms where notary is required, and so that was a basis for the form, but it's not necess- necessarily required by the ordinance. Um, my suggestion would be that if the council wishes to take up the issue about the form, they can do so, or they can refer it to the Ethics Commission.
And so is it typical that, I mean, I'm shocked all these years that we don't have anything.
A standard form.
A standard disclosure form.
It just hasn't risen to the level where it's been requested in this way. And so what we've done is we've told people it's required, and then there's not a staff hasn't necessarily been tasked with making sure people comply with that. This was more within the council's consciousness at this point, because we'd had in front of y'all the list of the the disclosures that are required. And so when this came up, they specifically asked, and for the purpose of just making sure everything was done correctly, and they had that list of disclosures in front of them, that's why it was requested the applicant be provided to do so.
Sure, and I agree with it. We need it. I I just wanna make sure that the um Ethics Committee has reviewed it and approved it, and that council has, and and it actually even, first version of it still didn't have an optional section that they. still didn't have an optional section that they filled out. So what y'all saw was an attempt to to write out the story of what the relationship was on the on the sidebar. So the bottom line is it it needs work, but I also want to make it clear that the disclosure on applications through the planning office, the difference between a zoning application and doing business with the city, entering into a contract with the city.
The CIQ form applies to contracts.
Which would be a PUD?
No.
Okay.
A PUD's not a contract.
Would it be a development agreement?
It would be, it's a contract for goods and services and so um it would be like your your um when you go out for bids for construction contracts, for example, that's part of the packet is for people to fill those out.
Okay, so not for like a terse reimbursement contract or anything like that?
Not necessarily. So I mean, that statute, that's a statutory issue and so um those.
I just, I want to make sure that, yeah, I want to.
How about we do, we do page a suggestion and we just send this to the Ethics Commission? Um, you know, they're gonna know what kind of information they they need on the form. Um, and they can discuss it and maybe bring a form back to us and maybe with the Eth- the Ethics Commission has its own attorney and they can figure that out.
And they can, they can spend the time on it that they need to. And we were just trying to get something in front of them so they could get it done. And they spend whatever time they feel they need to do so and.
Yeah.
Get something that works.
It should be a standardized form.
A standardized form or they they specify some other form of disclosure that is, they determine is something they'd like to recommend and the council approves.
Yeah.
All right, so no action, so.
Well, no, the action.
Is that a motion?
Well, you put it on, there is no action.
There's, there's just discussion, so I don't know. I guess we would have an action later on?
You can, you can take action to refer to the.
To the, okay, yeah, let's do that then. Let's refer it to the Ethics Commission to bring, bring us, yeah.
Motion, second, all in favor? All right.
Thank you for your help on that.
All right, we move to number twenty-nine, discuss and consider action on a memorandum of understanding, MOU with the NRP Apartment Group. Council member Cannon?
I was approached by NRP um in regards to um an apartment going in in an area that is already zoned multifamily, so it will get apartments. And I thought this was um an interesting proposition and would help us with some affordable um but still be high quality. So I asked them to come and give us a presentation. And it's Jason, I can't pronounce his last name, with NRP.
Don't worry about it. Uh, for the record, my name is Jason Oreciga with the NRP Group from San Antonio, Texas.
Thank you.
Um, as you'll see on the presentation with the very creatively named Leander Loffs, um, that this is a proposition for quality workforce housing. Uh, I will get to the slide of the location, but it is located as a topic of discussion tonight fairly frequently on the corner of Baghdad and Halsey. So we will be discussing, I will be discussing the location as well. This is also a partnership with the um Capital Area Housing Finance Corporation. Um, and I will get into the details of what that means too. A little bit about the NRP Group itself, um since, as you can read there, since two thousand four. Actually, now it's a little over eighteen thousand affordable housing units have been built. And what's important about the NRP Group is that we develop, we build, and we manage and we do not sell our workforce housing product. So we keep and we manage it throughout, throughout the, throughout the term. We've never sold one in Texas. Um, and so we 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 stick with our product whereas a lot of other developers who may come in, uh usually in the apartment business, they'll develop and then and then flip the product three to five years later. So we don't do that and we control everything from front to end, so. Also with the partnership with Capital Area Housing Finance, they will be the owner of the land and the eventual owner of the apartments as well. They've done multiple uh apartment complexes in their service area, which is every county surrounding Travis, but not Travis itself. A little bit about the actual uh community itself. Um, again, partnership Capital Area Housing Finance, it's three hundred and twenty-four unit multifamily residential development representing a fifty-seven million dollar investment. Rent range, actually, it's a little high right now. It's it's about eight hundred ninety to thirteen eighty a month. And that's from a one bedroom to four bedrooms. And that's something that's pretty unique too for workforce housing is that you rarely see four bedrooms. We're proposing forty-four to forty-eight four bedrooms. That's important for providing housing options um for for the residents of of and potential potential future residents of Leander. Continuing on, that's a, that's a community, uh one of our clubhouses right there.
Where, where is that community?
That one's in Fort Wor- that one's in Fort Worth.
Okay.
It's called the Mercantile. Uh, also with a three hundred and twenty-four unit, I want to say that this is a a twenty-three acre uh tract of land on Bin, uh Binbrook Ranch owned by John Lloyd, if you're familiar. Um, it could accommodate, that was something that we were looking at. It could accommodate if it's a development type A, uh well over five hundred and fifty units and if it's development type B over four hundred. Uh, so we are trying to scale it down to some degree. Uh, what's important is is who we're going to be serving and and that's where we get into the concept of workforce housing. It's not Section Eight, it's for those who make sixty percent of area median income and below. And so area median income as established by HUD in this area is going to be ninety-four thousand five hundred this year. So that we are projecting, we are targeting those who make uh with sixty percent of that, which is effectively fifty-eight thousand. So you have a lot of developers who come in and say, I'm providing affordable housing and I can do it for your first responders and for your teachers and firefighters. And it's not always necessarily the case. When I say that in San Antonio, it's not the case. The area median income is too low in San Antonio, so sixty percent when I'm providing that is a different, is a different subset. This truly is the workforce housing. Uh, when I was looking at teacher salaries in Leander ISD, uh fifty-eight thousand goes up to, I think, a twenty-year teacher with a doctorate. So so that would be, so that would, and with the four bedroom, if they have, if they have kids, that would be targeting those families. Uh, here's a little, a a slide of what we had looked at. Again, the firefighter and police officer, uh that's, that those are like police officer, officer one and the firefighter initial, teacher initial, those are, those are the initial salaries. That's why I put an asterisk next to those because as they move on, there is, there is a possibility that a teacher, you know, a twenty-five-year teacher, twenty-five-year teacher with a doctorate would not qualify or a police officer level three would not qualify. So that that is something that I just, I want to be fully transparent when I'm saying. But that, then again, most of, uh, most of, like I said, workforce housing, that's what we qualify as workforce housing would qualify. Uh, and this is the part about the community that I wanted to explain. It's not just apartment complex, it is a community. It's gated with swimming pool, health and wellness center, onsite property uh management and maintenance, which we talk about, uh which continues on. Children's playground, community and conference spaces, laundry facility facilities, uh natural green and open spaces, the business center, and then the most important part is the resident services programs. What we offer is, is we offer the Homework First program, which is an after-school program. And it's, as a dad of three kids, it's probably my favorite program we offer. And that is a place where we have a children's activity room and the, and the children of our residents can come and use free of charge and they can come and you, and they come after school and they are essentially watched uh from about three to five. They get healthy snacks. Uh, it's called Homework First. I don't know if they always do their homework, but they, but they are watched. They make friends and they, and we have actually seen a whole letter grade improvement. We've done studies. We've seen a letter grade improvement with this program. So this program is, it it certainly works. And that's not the only program we do. We also have the, during the summer, we have summer camp because, I mean, after school, school only lasts nine months out of the year, but we have the summer camp program as well. And you'd be surprised that there's a lot of children living in uh in some of these successful deals we've done in San Marcos and Kyle, uh even in Austin who have not been to the Capitol. So we'll do field trips where we go to the Capitol, we do a mock legislative session. And then not just for the kids, we also have programs for the adults too. Financial literacy, computer training, food pantry programs, and we partner a lot with local agencies. In fact, we partner a lot with local builders too when we build. That's something I neglected to mention. But we try to hire as local as we can as possible. It's important. So that's the location map, uh north of Binbrook, uh south of Binbrook subdivision, Binbrook Ranch and north of Binbrook Ranch Park, um and right on the arterial Baghdad and Halsey.
I'm sorry, as we're looking at that map, you said how many units?
Three hundred and twenty-four on twenty-three acres. Uh, that's, that's a more appropriate site plan. Uh, the one thing I wanted to note about this site plan is we will ask for no variances. No, not, not for, well, no variances, not for parking, not for landscaping, nothing, not for masonry. They're all, they're, uh, we would build it to everything to Leander's, Leander standards. And we tried to, we tried to move this one so it had the least amount of impact whatsoever uh to the single family directly to the north.
Did you happen to meet with those single family residences?
We did not, no. We, we, we just wanted to impact it as less, as least as possible and 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 get the density down as small as, as small as something that could financially pencil. And yet, because it's zoned properly, we didn't want to like load it up in in there and then like start turning the buildings. We wanted to design it to that. Uh, a little bit about the demographics. We had talked about the median household income, the ninety-four thousand five hundred, as I had mentioned. Uh, the fact that it's, that's currently zoned and then the schools that it's currently zoned too. Okay, so here is, what the request tonight is, we're requesting for Leander City Council to pass a memorandum of un- of agreement or an agreement, Paige, is it, we call it a pilot agreement? Yeah, we worked with Paige and Mr. Powers, Mr. Kegel, uh, on that rather extensively the past week. Thank you guys very much for your time. And the partnership with Capital Area Housing, which what we've done in the past, makes this property ad valorem tax exempt. So that's, that's been, and the reason why we get the tax exemption is after chapter thirty, chapter three ninety-four of the Texas Government Code, it was originally put in place. A lot of other states will pu- will, will fund workforce housing. Texas doesn't necessarily fund workforce housing specifically. They put this in place and said if with the property tax, with the proper, ad valorem property tax exemption, that you can move, the, the, you're able to lower the rents and you're able to provide the services that I mentioned and yet still build a high-quality product. And so that was, that's essentially what, that's essentially what the motivation was behind it. And and Capital Area Housing Finance is, is a housing finance corporation. I could get into the details certainly if y'all ask, but that's, that's one of the issues. However, with, with a city like San Antonio or Houston or Austin or Dallas, a property tax exemption can, can go in the rolls and it's not necessarily a big hit. But with Leander, uh, we can understand that it's something. So we offered, uh, initially off the bat to do a pilot program, a payment in lieu of taxes. And and I have the calculations right here and it's based on a, a, a good approximation of exactly what the, of what the taxes you would be getting over the, over the years. And it doesn't end. It would still keep going on to pay the city their share of taxes. So because we, we are, we do have the property tax exemption, but we have the pilot that's coming to pay the city their portion. And uh, a little bit about the pilot itself is, is the pilot itself, uh, and then again, that's just something that's been negotiated. Um, it's, it's over eighteen years is, actually seventeen years, is two point nine million. The payment's calculated assuming a successful development. The good thing about the pilot being locked in right now is, is we are assuming a development with a vacancy rate of six percent. So whether or not, whether or not the, 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 the program is successful and it should be successful, but whether or not it is, this pilot payment must be made regardless of of what happens. It must be made or there will be penalties and that's something, again, that we had worked with the attorneys and the city staff. And and I, I talk about the must be made and it won't go up or down because these, and it's, it's, it's frozen, uh, it's frozen with an escalator, actually. It's frozen and then it starts escalating up. And again, let me pass out, this is part of the backup, but I'm gonna pass it out so y'all can see. Do you mind I give it to the cap, correct me? That is, that, that's the payment calculation roughly to figure to be about, like I said, two point nine million over seventeen years. Over eighteen years is closer to about three point two million.
What do you get out of this?
What do we get out of it?
Yeah.
We get a developer fee for, for, for building it, but then we also get the fact that, and this is, uh, to, to honestly sound, I don't want to seem like I'm disingenuous when I'm answering this.
No, I know.
So.
Just in a contract, there's considerations, so I'm just wondering what the other.
No, we, no, we, we get, we get to build the apartments and and we buy it and we, we, as a developer, we make a fee. As a contractor, we make a fee and as a manager, we make a fee. So that's what we get out of it. But what I get out of it, and I was trying to ask, uh, answer in the not so disingenuous like the way is that when I build these, when, when I go to my grand openings and I see the people speak um that are there and say that, that I, I didn't have a three-bedroom option. I didn't have a four-bedroom option. I have three kids and whatever the case may be. And I'm not trying to come up with like an egregious story or anything because these happen relatively frequently. But when I'm there and somebody says, thank you for doing this, that's personally why our company got into the business of doing this because it's not, it's not easy as you would imagine to step in front of a city council and say, well, you know, we're gonna be ad valorem tax exempt and we're doing this. And and there's also a lot of processes that goes through uh this product to the state to get it fully financed. It's, it's difficult. It's, it's, so there's a lot of effort that goes through it, um, but that's personally why I do it. But as a company, we do it. We do it for that, for that reason too. We do it for any, like, as any other developer would do it. Uh, this just happens to be a unique product to offer housing options on a already zoned property. We just wanted to, we were trying to bring a different kind of option to, to, to the city of Leander.
So what is a school system that's two billion dollars in debt get out of it?
So the school system, that's a good question. So the school, the, the school, you're, you're right when you say it's, it's exempt from the ad valorem. Unfortunately, with the, the, the Leander ISD this year, I think because they're, what, I forgot what it's, Chapter Forty-One, property-rich district. They, they are, they are probably going to pay into this year, an article that just came out that I had read somewhere in the neighborhood of three million dollars. Well, the good news about this is, is i- if you were to build twenty of these, I wouldn't recommend it, honestly. I, I wouldn't, I mean, if you're the city of Austin or San Antonio, maybe, because they say they have a hundred and twenty-five thousand uh workforce housing shortage and a hundred and sixty-eight thousand workforce housing shortage respectively. Uh, Leander's obviously not that great. We do believe that there is a demand for it and our market study indicates that it does, but I digress. The school district, it, it's, it, there, there is not a tax base for the school district, but they still get average daily attendance. They still get the kids that will be attending it. So that, so the formula will still be calculated and and in the Robin Hood system, they'll still be paid into it. Now, a lot of people will look at that and say, well, that might change come with this eighty-six legislative session. They're looking at a lot of changes to go into that, but I, I tried to prepare for this meeting and ask some legislators how that would change. And they, they're anticipating that if anything, it changes because Austin ISD has been kind of the benchmark for how they're, how they're viewing this. If anything, they're gonna change it to where they're gonna start taking that into account of their, of, of the uh, of, of the Chapter Forty-One calculations as well. So plus, you'll have the ADA uh to be able to calculate, which that's, that's most of the formula to pay the school district. And again, y'all are property-rich, so, so if it was a property poor, it'd be a different argument, uh, certainly. But with the property rich, uh, it's, 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 uh, it's, it's, it's reducing that basis. So, so the, so, but at the same time, still adding children, so adding to that calculation.
So it may help us on the three million dollar Robin Hood that we're gonna be shipping out of here.
It will, it will. And now if that goes away.
Right.
Then it will help you anyway because what, what I'm looking at, I can't definitively predict the future, but of all the bills that I'm looking at, there are very few that, well, they almost all address that especially because it's Austin, has so many properties that are off the tax, the tax rolls. And I mean, government-owned buildings, quasi-governmental-owned buildings, public companies, there's so many that are off that that's, that that becomes a problem. And so, and so that they're looking at potentially adding, when they factor this in, about a hundred million in value to Austin ISD. So if that changes to this one, the fifty-seven million dollar in value that this is would be added to that. But uh, but again, that's, that's of course, that's, that's if that gets passed. As it stands right now, under the Chapter Forty-One, I think the school district personally would benefit. And we've had this conversation with multiple school districts, of course, and their attorneys. And, and uh, and that, with the system and how it works right now, that's my answer to your question. I think that they would honestly benefit from the situation, from it. And then additionally benefit, I'm sorry, you know what, I'm not gonna, I'm rambling. Go ahead.
Well, you just said that you've met with multiple school districts. Have you met with our school district to see the impact to the three schools that you had on the last slide?
We called them certainly to, to ask. We called them certainly to, to ask to, to the, to impact for it. And the nice thing is that they had, that because it's zoned, they had already planned for this having actually even more kids.
What did they tell you about Gym Plane Elementary?
What, what?
You, you showed on there that this feeds into Gym Plane Elementary. What did they tell you about adding three hundred units feeding into it?
They said it was actually, that it was, to be honest with you, they said it was still crowded, but, but, I, I'm...
Yeah.
Uh, no, 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 I'm not, I'm, 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 I'm not about...
But LISD was planning for five hundred and fifty units.
They were planning...
Because that's what it's zoned for right now.
Yeah, so that's, so they were kind of, they were relieved and not relieved. It was like, it was sort of a, a, a good news, bad news type thing. It's like, okay, y'all are actually gonna develop this, well, that, that, we're not exactly happy about that, but if you're not developing into the maximum amount that we've budgeted for, all right, you know? But they are, I mean, but, but certainly with Leander growing, y'all are, y'all are bursting at the seams for a lot of reasons.
Especially in this specific area.
Oh, no, especially in this, in this specific area. Uh, no, I agree.
The point, though, I think that is glaring right now is that they may have planned for this, but they didn't plan for it to be tax-exempt from paying into school taxes.
Oh, certainly.
That's major.
But when, but, I know, but, but, uh, and I agree with you and I'm not, uh, again, that is true. They did not plan for it being tax-exempt. But as I had answered, uh, or hopefully answered to, to Mr., to Mayor Hill, um, that hopefully the, 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 the tax exemption, not hopefully, but definitively, the, the tax exemption is actually not going to count on their rolls while they still get the ADA. So, they still get the, they still get the students and they still get the money to calculate from the state. But, but it's not paying into additionally adding to that property-rich, uh, to the property-rich criteria.
I hear what you're saying.
Okay.
I get theoretical offset.
That's a formula that we don't know.
Well, you know, I'm gonna be honest with you. It's a formula I don't even a hundred percent understand. Because I'll tell you what the school districts, but this has just happened statewide. The, 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 all the taxes go to the state and then they redistribute it.
Mm-huh.
So, that formula calculates what the property value, what, what, what the values are. It calculates what, how many children are coming. It calculates a lot of things. And, but one of the major components of it is the actual, is how many children are attending. If the children don't attend, but yet are still like slated to go to it, like, some school districts have this problem, then that, then that becomes a problem, you know, if there's a, a truancy. Uh, but if the children are, are attending and they are there for their, their, they meet their average daily attendance, it's, it's, in that case, it has been viewed, uh, at least in, in a lot of circumstances as a benefit.
Can you go back a couple of slides to the site plan?
Yeah.
So, you men, what are the two green lots on the right-hand bottom ponds? So, you mentioned that you're trying to minimize the impact to the neighbors to the north. Why didn't you move the ponds?
To the north.
To the north.
Because that's uphill.
It's, because it's up, because it's uphill. I mean, because it drains that way. We could probably, to be honest with you, uh, we could still probably push it back some more. And if that was, uh, that was a request for council to, to say, to, to give us like a minimum setback, uh, or a maximum setback, rather, or, no, 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 minimum. If a minimum setback from that, then, I mean, this, it meets code, what we have right here, but that, still, we could push it back further.
So, can I ask you a question? So, the, the pilot program that you've worked out here is giving us a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars a year?
No, on year one, but then there's an escalator in it.
Right.
So, if you look at, if you look at, uh, if you look at year eighteen, it's, 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 I don't know what the number is.
How much is it without the tax exemption status?
It would be, you mean...
On three hundred and twenty-four units? How much?
To the city would be the virtually the same amount. We calculated it to, to be identical. Oh, you mean without apartments at all?
At, at a hypothetical value. I mean, how do you...
Well, he said it's a value of fifty-seven million and that's how you came up with the hundred and forty-three thousand dollars starting and then it goes up.
We, we, it, well, it's valued on the net operating income approach, which is the slide is going at, and we've, we valued it on that one.
Two point nine.
Okay, so, if it wasn't tax credit, tax exempt, whatever it is, and you were to build three, this same exact unit there, three hundred and twenty-four units, how much city taxes annually would we get?
About the, roughly about the same. We calculated it to be similar.
Am I not reading this right? Six hundred and eighty-nine thousand? Total full taxes, six hundred and eighty-nine thousand? Oh, the city share.
I believe that's, that's all...
One hundred and fifty-six value, twenty-six million, yeah.
That's with school, county.
Okay.
That would be...
Yeah, that shows you how little the city gets.
But if we're locked into this pilot, if we're locked into this pilot program...
The actual percentage, go ahead.
If we're locked into this pilot program and these percentages, though, what if the tax rate, uh, the value of the property really increases? But, you know, exponentially, but then we're just, we're locked into this for fifteen years.
Well, and so that's something we could, we had discussed and that's something that if, that if, if the issue becomes that we want it to be based on what the taxes would be, that's something that we can do. We can do, we, we thought that this would actually be a preferable method because it, uh, it's something that everybody knows what it is, what it is upfront. It's not, it's not paid as taxes are. It's, it's a pay, it's a payment in lieu of. So, people can, so, so the city can use it for parks or, or utilities or whatever the case, or whatever the case may be. It can, it could, it's completely non-discretionary, or it's, sorry, it's completely discretionary. So, you, you can use it however you wish to, to be able to use it. And so, that's why we had, we had done it locked in at the, again, at the beginning. But, uh, if we wanted, if the city, the will of city council was, "Look, we like the actual housing, but we want the, we want it to operate, we want the, the pilot, the pilot share to be broken down and calculated on a yearly basis, like the tax, like the, like the actual taxes would be." Because this is a good approximation of what it should be with the escalator and that's what we had worked with through, uh, through council and through your city staff, uh, and the city manager as well. We thought it would be a good approximation and then at the same time, it wouldn't dip. So, because the, because the property, because the, our property is valued on the net operating income approach, if the, if the net operating income goes down, taxes would go down. If it goes up, taxes would go up, but it could only go up to a hundred percent, the occupancy, the net operating income. If we're calculating at a vacancy of six percent, then we're paying taxes, uh, we're paying taxes, assuming a very successful project and we're locking that in at the beginning. And so, the idea is to lock that in with an escalator and pay the city of Leander what their, what their city taxes probably will be and probably in excess of what it will be. But again, if, if the desire would be to go back and say, "You know what? That, that, we, I think we'd rather just have it calculated yearly on what it should be and the, on the city thing." We can do that, too. Uh, that's, that's not, that's not, that's not something that we would be opposed to doing whatsoever. We just thought that this was a more preferable method. And it's typically been the method that, that we have negotiated with other cities as well.
I like the concept of the project, but I cannot get past the no-school tax and that, I, that's a wall for me.
Okay.
Can I, you've told us a lot about, uh, the various programs that, that you do once residents are moved in. Um, I looked up resident reviews for several of your, your properties online and I saw two recurring themes. One was the length of time that it takes to go through the approvals, which I assume is a bureaucracy that you all have very little control over.
Sure.
And the second was, uh, a number of people reporting crimes, particularly in the parking lots. What are you planning on doing differently here to ensure the safety of Leander residents?
So, that's, I mean, it's a, it, it would be a gated community and, but the other ones are gated. So, they're like, so that, that you could go back to that and say that there's, that there's, you know, a number of crimes. I would say that, that, that some of the other crimes, I mean, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna not make light of it or I'm not gonna try and shove it under the rug. It's, it just depends on the areas of where that they're built and, and some of the areas around it. We would put the cameras, we would have a courtesy officer program. And we noticed that, that those crimes, I mean, the squeaky wheel sometimes gets a grease, uh, or when...
The squeaky wheel's posting pictures on Facebook.
No, no, no. No, I know that they are. And, but, but, but we have tried to, uh, address those, those particular problems and have actively, and have been actively addressing that with extra security measures, including cameras and courtesy officer programs.
Can you tell me about the courtesy officer?
So, what we do is, uh, we offer usually either at a reduced or free rent, uh, a, an apartment for an officer in exchange for, um, in exchange for just patrolling the area. So, we do that.
And just having their car parked in the parking lot helps?
Yes, that can, that can help, too, certainly.
I would also be curious to, to, to see if the stats for the robberies or the, the, um, issues, the crime in, in the parking lots here, how that compares to any regular, um, apartment complex.
You know, you also talked about schools and I, I know for a fact in Cedar Park, when the tax-supported apartments went in, that the test scores in the nearby school went down seventeen percent. That's just a fact.
Okay.
And, and, you know, when you combine that with, um, you know, the, the monetary hit to a school district that's busting at the seams, I can't support it.
Understood. Well, and, and, and I, and so the only thing, and, and I'm not trying, I understand what you're saying. So, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to convince you necessarily to support it. I just wanted to put to that, that, that we've seen letter grade impro, statistical fact, letter grade improvements with our kids in our, in our school districts. Or for, for our particular projects because of our homework-first program. I'm not sure if that one, if that, if that, if that other tax credit prob, uh, property had the same kind of programs that we have. I don't know. I, I really don't. So, I can't spec, I can't say specifically that, oh, yeah, that, that's, you know, that that's definitively the reason why. I don't know. Uh, so, but as far as the school dis, the school district getting the taxes on that one, uh, I mean, again, it's, it's just, I guess, an interpretation of whether you think that, that, that it, it's actually going to benefit them in a property-rich district situation. So, that, that's what I say to that.
I'd like to put, um, Chief Mitten on the spot here. I apologize.
Don't apologize.
While he's coming up, Mr. Cagle...
Actually, actually, I'm enjoying this, right?
How many, um, tax-subsidized, non-senior housing apartments do we have? I...
I know of a couple.
Okay, we have, we have about at least three, is that correct?
Three. I, I know that's...
I'm thinking, and, and they're, and they're different programs there.
Right.
But, but in general, I, I believe there's the Lakeline and there's, uh, I can't think of the ones across the street from Leander High School.
The white brick ones, yeah.
Yes. And so, that's two that I know of.
Behind the library.
Behind the library.
Yeah, and, and right, Merritt Legacy behind the library.
Yeah.
And there, I think they're all three different programs, but they are subsidized, as...
It seems like a year or two ago, we approved a couple others that have not...
They were senior.
Well, it was for the elderly.
They were seniors.
All seniors, yeah. Uh, Chief, I have a question.
Can you address those specific?
Which ones?
Okay. I had a question. Um, I had a question about, about the crime rate that you've seen in, in the apartment complexes and maybe even in the parking lots since that was specifically addressed and, and something that's councilmember Sederquist saw. And, um, do you see a difference in the crime rate around the apartments in general? And the apartments of, and this, I might put you on the spot for this, but...
I understand.
The regular apartments compared to those that are subsidized?
Sure. So, I mean, one thing is, I can get you exact numbers. Luana can...
Yes, okay.
Punch those up. And so, kind of described last time, we're talking about crime rates. They're kind of everywhere, but in, uh, you know, with, when you deal with apartment complexes, it's kind of a little bit different than, than neighborhoods because you've got a lot of people up and a lot of cars and there's just crimes of opportunity. Um, we have, you know, some, some of our areas, like, it's hard to say without getting the exact numbers. If, if our higher-end apartments have less crime, typically you have young professionals in there and they're, they're, they go to bed, they do their normal schedule, they're not walking around parking lots looking into windows and doors. Doesn't mean somebody doesn't come in from somewhere else to do that. But, uh, I can get you those numbers to kind of, and doesn't help you write the second, but I can get you, uh, whatever you need as far as, you know, as crime stats involving in our apartments.
Oh, yeah, that would be great. Actually, I've always been curious about that because there's been, you know, whispers here and there that this happens and that happens at, at certain apartment complexes. And I would like to actually have that hard data.
Yeah, and, you know, sometimes we call it, uh, crime prevention through environmental design. It's all of how something's placed. I mean, your traditional old apartments just had a center and buildings around it, so there wasn't a lot of patrolling that officers can get in and look and go around. Where a lot, I haven't really got to see what this layout was from back there, but, I mean, uh, you know, gates can help sometimes. A lot of lighting, security cameras. We have an officer now that works at Lakeline and he does walk around and every once in a while, he'll see somebody and move them along their way. So, I mean, that, that does help, uh, sometimes, so...
It's a big complex.
Yes, it's a very big complex.
Did you say we have an officer that works at the Lakeline apartments?
We do. Officer George, yeah, he works there. Well, he's a courtesy officer there.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Thank you.
He's been there for many, many, many years.
Good to know.
Do, do you necessarily see a, a crime different, just your gut feel on those three apartments compared to all the other apartments?
I don't wanna get, I don't...
I mean, I'm not gonna...
No, I get it. I mean, you know, when we, in some of our apartments where we've had lower income, we've had different issues with, you know, drugs are kind of everywhere. You're gonna see them in high and low. But it, it seems sometimes when you have a younger community, it obviously has to do with parenting and parent, and curfews and things like that to not have them, uh, out at certain hours. But, I mean, we've had some issues in, in some apartments where we've had, uh, you know, drug use and we've gotten to really, uh, good relationships with the managers and, uh, that's there, that there's a problem. They evicted that problem and got them out of that complex. But sometimes you get new people that move in and we have to start that process all over. So, uh, I know the apartments at, at Lakeline and the ones by the high school, um, if I had to compare those with a few of the others, we'll probably have a higher call volume of, of people calling the police for, for certain things. Uh, I just don't know exactly what they're for. Sometimes in, in any apartment complex, you're gonna get disturbances because of the, or you're gonna get the call for a disturbance because the, the walls aren't, are right next to up-down, people running around, all kind of stuff like that. So, um, but, uh, they, they will keep you a little bit busier sometimes than, than most, than your average neighborhood.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief. Sir, thank you.
You answered all my questions, thank you.
I appreciate it.
One more question.
Thank you.
I have one more question from our attorney. Sorry. I just want to be clear so that everybody understands. This land is already zoned multifamily. Council cannot deny an apartment complex who comes before us, who doesn't ask for any variances, who wants to put the maximum number of units on that site, which I haven't verified, but let's just say it's over five hundred units.
But they wouldn't come to us, would they? If it's already zoned.
They wouldn't even come to us. Thank you.
I'm in motion to deny.
I'll second.
All right. Um, we, we did have a speaker, so I'm gonna let him speak if that's okay.
Oh, sorry.
Joel Snyder?
Yeah, that's me. Um, good evening, Council Mayor. Um, what I want to talk about is where this is, okay? Uh, this is on Halsey, right at Baghdad. Uh, how many of you went to the, uh, kids' baseball, uh, opening game? Okay, this is across the street. You got, go right up Halsey, there's our neighborhood. We have two hundred and seventy-six homes in Savannah Ranch and he's gonna put three hundred and twenty-five apartments, three and four-bedroom. When he says it's fifty-six thousand dollar min, uh, uh, maximum, um, amount of income, that doesn't say you can't have people that have ten thousand income. When you look, we, we just bought our home about a year and a half ago. And when you go and look, you look at a thing called, uh, Realty.com and they have maps. And those maps will show you where shopping is, show you where school is. But what's more important, when we were looking, it shows you where crime is. Almost invariably, apartments had higher crime. So, you're gonna put this right where there's already current good housing and across the street from the playground that the kids are gonna play baseball at. Is that what you want? And that's all I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion in a second. Let's take the vote, all in favor of denying. All right, all opposed.
I would, I would actually like to table it, so...
I would like to table it, too, because I'm so sorry, but someone already zoned it multifamily and five hundred and fifty apartments can come in tomorrow.
Motion is denied.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Okay. All right, we move to item thirty. Committee into executive session pursuant to section five-five-one dot zero-eight-seven, Texas Local Government Code to discuss or deliberate have proposed economic development incentives or business prospect that the governmental body seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the territory of the governmental body with which the governmental body is conducting economic development negotiations. We are now in executive session. The time is eleven seven oh seven. Hello, all you sleepy people. The time is now eleven eighteen and...